And the devolved governance structure as enshrined in Chapter eleven of the Constitution. Devolved government aims to bring services closer to the people as a means of accelerating development and enhancing collective responsibility. The settings of the Senate outside the traditional premises at the Parliament buildings in Nairobi are designed as an innovative way of enhancing the interaction between the national and county levels of governments and the means way through which the Senate may exercise its tools as provided for under Article ninety-four and ninety-five of the Constitution. The objectives of the settings of the Senate outside Nairobi are, one, to promote the rule and the work of the Senate and enhance public awareness regarding the business of the Senate and Parliament in general. Two, highlight existing and new opportunities for engagement in the legislative processes. Three, develop and strengthen partnerships at the county level of government and finally provide an opportunity to members and staff of county assemblies to learn and share best practices with senators and parliamentary officers. The Senate embraces the fundamental principle that exists for the people and stand as a beacon of democracy, representing their collective will and aspirations. Through the Senate Machinani initiative, the Senate is making its contribution towards enriching inclusivity in the management of public affairs in Kenya. In holding its settings at the County Assembly of Bosia, the Senate also affirms that county assemblies have the power to directly identify and address the people's concerns, vitalize their hopes and aspirations, deepen a democratic, consultative and participatory government as well as strengthen institutions of governance in Kenya. I would like to reaffirm the critical role that the county assemblies play in our governance structure. For such, county assemblies need to play a more prominent role in ensuring good governance by proactively taking up their constitutional and statutory roles. In this regard, the Senate is willing and ready to partner with the county assemblies to ensure that the promise of devolution is achieved. Honorable senators, ladies and gentlemen, beginning yesterday and over the next four days, a number of activities have been lined up, including plenary and committee settings, as well as engagement forums and inspection visits. I particularly single out the public engagement forum facilitated by the Standing Committee on Justice, Legal Affairs and Human Rights on the Constitution of Kenya Amendment Bill, Senate Bill Number thirteen of twenty twenty-five, which brought multitudes of Bosia residents to express their views on a critical constitutional amendment proposal to enhance the legislative mandate of the Senate. In the coming days, there will be similar engagement under the auspices of various select committees on diverse matters, including the status of early childhood development education and county vocational training centers, the effectiveness of the Bosia one-stop border post and the utilization of industrial parks. These activities will accord the residents of Bosia County an opportunity to actively engage and participate in the legislative and other businesses of the Senate. I encourage the residents of Bosia and the neighboring counties to turn up and engage with the Senate. Now, honorable senators, ladies and gentlemen, I now wish to acknowledge the presence of a number of other invited dignitaries who have joined us for this special occasion. These are elected and other office holders from the executive and legislative arms of the county government of Bosia and counties which neighbor Bosia County. I request each invited guest to stand when called out so that you may be acknowledged by the Senate. I'm aware that some of them are yet to arrive. However, I will read out the entire list of those who we had invited. The Honorable Arthur Odera, Deputy Governor, Bosia County. The Honorable Kenneth Governor, Kenneth Lusaka, Governor, Bungoma County and former Speaker of the Senate. Thank you, Your Excellency Governor. The Honorable Governor, His Excellency Governor Fernandez Baraja. There is a Governor of Kakamega County yet to arrive. His Excellency Governor James Orango, Governor, Siya County, yet to arrive. His Excellency Governor Wilbur Otichilo, Governor of Vhega County, yet to arrive. Honorable Ronald Ochalu, Deputy Speaker, Bosia County Assembly. He is present in the House. The Honorable Emmanuel Situma, Speaker, Bungoma County Assembly. Speaker. Honorable James Namati, Speaker, Kakamega County Assembly. Thank you, Right Honourable Speaker. Honorable George Okode, Speaker, Siya County Assembly, yet to arrive. The Honorable Christopher. Thank you, Right Honourable Speaker. The Honorable Geoffrey Odanga, Member of Parliament, yet to arrive. The Honorable Wilberforce Owundo, Member of Parliament for Funula constituency, yet to arrive. The Honorable Edward Oku Kaunia, Member of Parliament for Teso North constituency, yet to arrive. The Honorable Joseph Oyula, Member of Parliament for Butula constituency, yet to arrive. The Honorable Mary Amase Otucho, Member of Parliament for Nambale constituency, yet... Yes, Member of Parliament for Teso South constituency, yet to arrive. The Honorable Geoffrey Mulanya, Member of Parliament for Nambale constituency, yet to arrive. The Honorable Catherine Omanu, Women Representative, Bosia County, yet to arrive. The Honorable Gabriel Arambo, Acting Clerk of Bosia County Assembly. Not yet, Mr. Donald Manyala, Clerk of the Kakamega County Assembly, yet to arrive. Mr. Eric Ogenga, Clerk of Siya County Assembly, yet to arrive. Miss Ambaka Kilinga, Clerk of the Vhega County Assembly, yet to arrive. On behalf of the Senate, on my own behalf, I wish to thank each one of you for honoring our invitation and joining us in this auspicious occasion. Now, honorable senators, ladies and gentlemen, in conclusion, I reiterate the symbolic relationship between the Senate and the county governments. This relationship based on mutual understanding, consultation, learning and experience sharing is paramount and must be nurtured for devolution to achieve its objectives as enshrined in the Constitution. Once again, I extend our gratitude to the leadership of Bosia County Government and the great people of Bosia County for the warm reception accorded to the Senate and for facilitating our settings. I thank you. Next order.
Clarification, Mr. Speaker, sir? Yes, Senator Boni.
Mr. Speaker, I want to beg to indulge me and to indulge the Senate of Vhega. This is a historic moment in our region and within our three communities to give us a moment to welcome colleagues to our region and also pass a word of appreciation to the people of Bosia for hosting us.
You may proceed, Senator Boni.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Colleague senators, this is Western. We are three communities here. The Subahoods, who sometimes people try to steal from us, attempting to call them Kalenjins when they are not. We have the Teso community and, of course, the Lua community. We feel truly honored through the speaker that you're going to be with us for this one week. This is truly historical because when I was looking at it, by the time all the forty-seven counties are reached, you are not going to be able to come back to Kakamega, Vhega and Bungoma and Transoya anytime soon. So, it's a rare privilege for us and I want to use this opportunity to thank the people of Bosia. Mr. Speaker, sir, Bosia County is unique in our community. It is the center of academic excellence. The first kidney transplant surgeon in Africa was Professor Nelson Awori, who taught me surgery. He was from here. This week, we are barring Professor Ada Obel from Bosirehea Village. He also taught me pharmacy. Not to mention Professor Nimrod Buabu, not to mention Professor Ojiyambo, not to mention the longest-serving Attorney General, Amos Wako, and so on and so forth. We are so privileged to have you and we would request that you address the business challenges that Bosia County faces. This is an economic giant that is just lying here. They make very little from ONs revenue, raising around five hundred million. And yet, the cargo they handle that comes from Mombasa passes through here in Bosia and through here in Malaba, up to seventy to eighty percent of the total volume. I believe that ONs' revenue of Mombasa should be comparable to ONs' revenue of Bosia. We should unlock this. At the moment, the county government is not able to make any reasonable returns, Mr. Speaker, from these trucks that you'll see passing here twenty-four seven. It is because, Mr. Speaker, there is lack for a holding zone for the trucks when they are trucking from Mombasa. It has been very difficult both for... the first generation government one because of the lack of support from the National Land Commission, which should help them to displace people to create space for us to maximize returns from these trucks. There is that and much more, Mr. Speaker, and I'm privileged to host you, even when the area senator comes, Senator Omthata. He's my kid brother, so he can't claim to host you ahead of me. Thank you and welcome everybody.
Senator for Vhega County, kindly make your welcoming remarks and three minutes.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I also join my colleague Senator Haluale to thank the Senate family for considering Bosia County as one of the counties where we are going to have Senate Machinani. Indeed, it's a great privilege for our region, a region composed of five counties. That is Vhega, Kakamega, Bosia, Bungoma and Transoya, which we are also claiming to be part of our region. So I hope the other senators will also have an opportunity. I also want to say that when you are coming to Bosia, you have to pass through my county, Vhega. Vhega starts from Maseno all the way to Yala. When you get to Yala, then you enter Siya County. So, when you come to Bosia, it is important that you visit Luanda, where we have a lot of good things, including the famous hub. But there are a lot of good things we do with the Bosia people. I know I'll be making a statement in regards to the road from Kisumu all the way to Bosia, which I know the national government is planning to have a dual carriageway. But even as that is being done, let it be done in a humane manner so that we have an international highway that benefits our two countries, Kenya and Uganda. I also want to join my colleague Haluale to say that I think it's important for Senate to look at opportunities for ONs' revenue for our counties which are at the border. For example, there is a lot of trade between Kenya and Uganda. How much of that trade is benefiting our county governments? And when we talk about that, we also talk about Bungoma County, which is also on the border. We also talk about the other counties which are at the border. I think that will be an important thing to consider. Secondly, the issue of challenges of who are being arrested recklessly by Ugandan government and they are not able to do their trade very well because of that harassment. I think the relevant committee needs to really deal with that issue so that we continue promoting fish business in this region. And lastly, Bosia County, as Senator Haluale has said, is very privileged in terms of human resource. This is a county that has highest number of professors in our region. And these professors, it's an indication that this is a very progressive region. But we are seeing challenges around early pregnancies, challenges around the school dropout. So that is negating the good gains that this county has made. So I hope Keosa, our good ladies, led by the SG, are going to look into issues of around early marriages, early pregnancies and all that so that we ensure that these girls who can become professors in future are able to be motivated and empowered to become great citizens of this country.
Thank you. Honorable senators, allow me to make further communication. As you may be aware, the chamber system in Bosia County Assembly is different from the one the senators are accustomed to in the Senate Chamber in Nairobi. It is therefore necessary for the precedium to make adjustment in the way senators request the floor. The following procedure will apply in seeking to capture the eye of the speaker. One, senators wishing to make contributions to any matter shall be required to raise their hand. The speaker will then announce the senator who takes the floor. Only the senator called upon by the speaker to take the floor may turn on their microphone. So as you raise your hand, please don't turn on your microphone until the speaker has given you the floor. Now, senators who wish to raise points of order, seek clarification or give information will also be required to raise their hand to capture the attention of the speaker. Now, your cooperation in this matter will facilitate the smooth conduct of the Senate proceedings. Next order.
Order number three, messages.
Honorable senators, I wish to report to the Senate. The pursuant standing orders forty-three and four have received the following message from the Speaker of the National Assembly regarding the approval by the National Assembly of the county government's additional locations, number bill, Senate Bill Number eight of twenty twenty-five. The message dated Thursday, second of October, twenty twenty-five, was received in the office of the Clerk of the Senate on the same date. Now, pursuant to standing order forty-four, and I report, I now report the message. Pursuant to the provisions of standing order forty-one, one and one forty-two of the National Assembly standing orders, I hereby convey the following message from the National Assembly. Whereas the county government's additional locations, number two bill, Senate Bill Number eight of twenty twenty-five, was published by Kenya Gazette Supplement, number eighty-nine, of eighteenth of June, twenty twenty-five, as a bill seeking to provide for additional allocations to county governments for the financial year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, the responsibilities of the national governments and county governments with respect to such allocations and for connected purposes. And whereas on Tuesday, thirtieth of September, twenty twenty-five, the National Assembly considered the county government's additional allocations, number two bill, Senate Bill Number eight of twenty twenty-five, and passed it with amendments as contained in the schedule of amendments attached here to. Now, therefore, in accordance with the provisions of Article one twelve one B of the Constitution and standing orders forty-one and one forty-four of the National Assembly standing orders, I hereby convey the same decision of the National Assembly to the Senate. Now, honorable senators, Article one twelve one B of the Constitution provides that if one house passes an ordinary bill concerning counties and the second house passes the bill in an amended form, it shall be referred back to the originating house for reconsideration. Honorable senators, in this regard, I direct the Standing Committee on Finance and Budget to deliberate on the National Assembly amendments and to report to the Senate. Further, pursuant to standing order one sixty-five, one of the Senate standing orders, I direct the National Assembly amendments to the county government's additional locations, number two bill, Senate Bill Number eight of twenty twenty-five, be circulated to all honorable senators. At appointed time, the Senate Business Committee will schedule the consideration of amendments in the committee of the whole. The House is accordingly guided. Thank you. Next order.
Order number four, petitions. Order number five, papers. The Senate Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I beg to lay the following paper on the table of the Senate today, Tuesday, the seventh of October, twenty twenty-five. This is a report of the Commission on Revenue Allocation on ONs' Revenue Potential and Tax Gap Study of County Governments. I thank you, Mr. Speaker. The Chairperson Standing Committee on Revolution and Intergovernmental Relations. Or any member of that committee may proceed to lay the paper. Senator Catherine Mumma, are you a member of that particular committee?
What happened? Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to lay the following paper on Senate today, seventh of October, twenty twenty-five. Report of the Standing Committee on Evolution and Intergovernmental Relations on its inquiry into commercial bank accounts opened and operated by county assemblies. Chairperson, Standing Committee on Evolution and Intergovernmental Relations.
The Chairperson Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources.
Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to lay the following papers on the table of the Senate today, seventh of October, twenty twenty-five. Number one, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. William Kaguro Michael regarding the Changara Water Pan, a World Bank-funded project in Bosia County. Number two, a report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Francis Wainahina Juguna Bogo concerning historical injustices and illegal alienation of LR number seven one five three, stock one, seven one five three, stock two, seven one five three, stock two R, and also LR number twelve, eight twenty-five in Kiambu County. Number three, the report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by James Mawurandjroge and other Nyandarwa internally displaced persons concerning delayed compensation and occupation of passes of land. Number four, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Wananchi Self-Help Group regarding land ownership dispute of the Wananchi Settlement Scheme in Watate constituency in Taita Taveta County. Number five, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Peter Kangwarunyaga regarding the plight of landless in Mudandara, Embu County. Number six, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Robin Kalama and other residents of Marungu in Taita Taveta County concerning threatened eviction from their ancestral land by the Holy Rosary Catholic Church Parish, Rwanda. Number seven, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by the representative of Mabundusi Land Squatters in Borachu World in Kisii County concerning delayed allocation of alternative land by way of resettlement and compensation for their ancestral land that was alienated by the government of Kenya for the creation of the Kisii Agricultural Institute and Kisii Farmers Training Center. And number eight, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Anagib Samson and others concerning recognition of land ownership rights and redress of historical land injustices in Mombasa County. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I beg to lay.
Next order. Order number six, notices of motion. The Chairperson Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources. Senator Faki.
Notice of motion. Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. William Kaguro Michael regarding the Changara Water Pan, a World Bank-funded project in Bosia County. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. William Kaguro Michael regarding the Changara Water Pan, a World Bank-funded project in Bosia County, laid on the table of the Senate today, Tuesday, seventh of October, twenty twenty-five.
The Chairperson Standing Committee on Land, again, you have another notice to give.
Notice of motion. Report of the Standing Committee...
Senator Faki, just proceed to give all these notices to your reports.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Francis Wainahina Juguna Bogo concerning historical land injustices and illegal alienation of LR number seventy-one fifty-three, stock one, seventy-one fifty-three, stock two, seventy-one fifty-three, stock R, also known as LR number one twelve eight twenty-five in Kiambu County. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Francis Wainahina Juguna Bogo concerning historical injustices and illegal alienation of LR number seven one five three, stock one, seven one five three, stock two, seven one five three, stock R, and also known as LR number twelve eight twenty-five in Kiambu County, laid on the table of the Senate Tuesday, seventh of October, twenty twenty-five. Notice of motion, report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to Senate by Mr. James Mawurandjroge and other Nyandarwa internally displaced persons, IDPs. IDPs, concerning delayed compensation and occupation of passes of land. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. James Mawurandjoroge and other Nyandarwa internally-displaced persons, IDPs, concerning delayed compensation and occupation of passes of land laid before, laid on the table of the Senate on Tuesday, seventh of October twenty twenty-five. Mr. Speaker, sir, notice of motion, Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Wananchi Self-Help Group regarding land ownership dispute of the Wananchi Settlement Scheme in Motate constituency in Taita Taveta County. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Wananchi Self-Help Group regarding land ownership dispute of the Wananchi Settlement Scheme in Motate constituency in Taita Taveta County, laid on the table of the Senate on Tuesday, seventh of October twenty twenty-five. Notes of motion, Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Peter Kangwarunyaga regarding the plight of the landless in Mudandara Embu County. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give the following, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Peter Kangwarunyaga regarding the plight of the landless in Mudandara Embu County, laid on the table of the Senate on the seventh of, on Tuesday, seventh of October twenty twenty-five. Mr. Speaker, sir, notes of motion, Report of the Standing Committee on Lands, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition by this, to the Senate by Mr. Robin Kalama and others, residents of Marungu in Taita Taveta County concerning threatened eviction from their ancestral land by the Holy Rosary Catholic Church Catholic Parish in Moanda. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Robin Kalama and other residents of Marungu in Taita Taveta County concerning threatened eviction from their ancestral land by the Holy Rosary Catholic Parish, Moanda, laid on the table of the Senate on Tuesday, seventh of October twenty twenty-five. Mr. Speaker, sir, notes of motion, Standing, Report of the Standing Committee on Lands, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Representative Mabundusi Land Squatters in Boraracho Ward in Kisii County concerning delayed allocation of alternative land. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Representatives of Mabundusi Land Squatters in Boraracho Ward in Kisii County concerning delayed allocation of alternative land by way of resettlement or compensation for their ancestral land that was alienated by the government of Kenya for the creation of Kisii Agricultural Institute and Kisii Farmers Training Centre, laid on the table of the Senate on Tuesday, seventh of October twenty twenty-five. Notes of motion, Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Anagib Shamsan and other petitioners concerning recognition of land ownership rights and redress of historical injustices in Mombasa County. Mr. Speaker, sir, I beg to give the notice of the following motion, that the Senate adopts the Report of the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Anagib Shamsan and others concerning recognition of land ownership rights and redress of historical injustices in Mombasa County, laid on the table of the Senate on Tuesday, seventh of October twenty twenty-five. I thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Now, before I call the next order, I've just been informed that the governor of Busia County is in the chamber. Governor, you may stand so that you may be acknowledged by the Senate. Thank you. Next order, clerk. Order number seven, Questions and Statements. Statement pursuant to Standing Order fifty-three, one, the Senator for Veiga County, the Honorable Godfrey Osotsi.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Arise pursuant to Standing Order fifty-three, one Committee on Transport, Public Works and Housing, on a matter of count-wide concern regarding Veiga County. Mr. Speaker, sir, there is an ongoing effort to expand Kisumu-Busia Highway as part of international highway, which is indeed welcome for the economic growth and improved connectivity between the two countries, and it promises between the two regions, which promises economic development and integration between the two countries. While we support the importance of modern infrastructure, the manner which it's being implemented has translated into inhuman affront to the economic and social rights enshrined in Article forty-three of the Constitution. The forceful eviction of traders at Luanda Market raises grave concerns as it is affecting the lives of many Kenyans, not just from Veiga County but all other neighboring counties, Kisumu, Siaya, Busia and Kakamega, who deserve protection under the law. Hundreds of small-scale entrepreneurs who have been depending on this market for decades were displaced without offering them conducive alternative sites. The sudden demolition of their stalls and trading spaces has not only disrupted economic activity in the town, but also the future of both who depend on earnings from the market. This raises serious concern regarding compensation, relocation arrangement and the level of concentration undertaken, especially with the stakeholders and the county government of Veiga. In the statement, the committee should address the following issues. Number one, whether the land or the spaces in question lie within a road reserve or it is a public market legally recognized by the county government of Veiga and the law. Two, whether the Kenya National Highway Authority, KENHA, has a legal redress mechanism available for processing complaints from affected persons. Number three, whether KENHA undertook adequate and extensive community sensitization and stakeholder engagement, particularly with the affected traders, as well as the involvement of local leadership as required under Article two thirty-two one D of the Constitution
Mr. Speaker, sir, I have three statements and I request that I read projects. Mr. Speaker, sir, arise pursuant to Standing Order fifty-three, one, to seek a statement from the Standing Committee on Roads, Transportation and Housing on a matter of inter-county concern regarding the proposed, this is a transformative four-hundred-and-eighty-seven-kilometer road network intended to traverse Busia, Siaya, Kisumu, Homabay and Migori Counties by crossing the Yala Swamp and then circling Lake Victoria. First studied in nineteen eighty-six, eighty-seven, the project is envisioned to spur ecotourism, expand the blue economy through fishing and aquaculture, and open historically marginalized areas to trade and prosper the commerce with Uganda and Tanzania. In the statement, the committee should address the following, whether the Ministry of Roads and Transport has updated the nineteen eighty-six feasibility study to reflect current social, economic and environmental realities and, if not, when such a review will be undertaken. Two, the current estimated cost, funding sources and implementation timeline for the project. Three, measures to safeguard the Yala Swamp ecosystem and guarantee sustainable resource management during construction and operation. Four, the extent of consultation with local communities and county governments, including mechanisms to ensure equitable sharing of economic benefits and public participation in any design changes. Five, the project's role in strengthening regional trade and with Uganda and Tanzania as well as the structures in place to guarantee transparency, accountability and timely completion of the project. Senator Andrew Omthatta, MP, Senator from Busia, first October twenty twenty-five. My second request for a statement is on the over-the-operationalization of the Muluanda Border Point in Samiasap County in Busia County. Mr. Speaker, sir, I arise pursuant to Standing Order fifty-three, clause one, to seek a statement from the Standing Committee on National Security, Defence and Foreign Relations on a matter of regional concern regarding the long-over-the-operationalization of the Muluanda Border Point in Samiasap County in Busia County. Mr. Speaker, sir, in the year two thousand and nine, the late President Mweki Baki declared Muluanda the third official Kenya-Uganda border crossing point in Busia County. This pledge was reaffirmed by President William Ruto in the year twenty twenty-three and the Prime Cabinet Secretary, the Honorable Ms. Salliam Davadi, in twenty twenty-five. However, the border point remains unguarded and non-operational. Mr. Speaker, operationalizing Muluanda Border Point would boost customs revenue, create jobs, improve cross-border services and infrastructure, grow local enterprises and strengthen Kenya's trade position within the East African Community. Its continued domancy denies the nation these economic and integration benefits. In the statement, the committee should address the following. One, the reasons for non-implementation of the presidential directives of the year two thousand and nine and the year twenty twenty-three regarding the Muluanda Border Point to date, including whether any performance indicators were established. Two, whether there have been any budgetary allocations for the said border point and, if so, outline itemized annual allocations and expenditures for the same from the financial year two thousand and nine to twenty ten to date. Three, steps taken to engage the Ugandan government regarding the boundary alignment and cross-border cooperation for the said border point. Four, the county-level planning and budgeting activities in place to support roads, markets or utilities around the border point. Senator, signed Senator Omthatta Koeti, MP, Senator from Busia, third year of September twenty twenty-five. My third and final request for a statement is on irregularities surrounding the Busia Green Park project. Mr. Speaker, sir, I arise pursuant to Standing Order fifty-three, clause one, to seek a statement from the Standing Committee on Land, Environment and Natural Resources on a matter of countywide concern regarding the irregularities surrounding the Busia Green Park project. Mr. Speaker, sir, the Busia Green Park project initially allocated Kenya Shelling's eight million, which was later revised to Kenya Shelling's six million, was intended to serve as the town's sole public recreational space. Despite its strategic role in urban beautification and environmental conservation, the site remains close to the public, with kiosks now under construction. County planning documents regarding the project are contradictory, with one claiming that the park is complete while another states that. Raising serious concerns over transparency, the rationale behind revising the budget allocation To six million, including itemized planning and implementation of the project. Close one, paragraph D, in the county's strategic framework plan and the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, the reason for the contradictory information between the county strategic plan, strategic framework plan twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and the annual development plan twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. The identity of the authority that sanctioning such a changes. Five, measures in place to safeguard public lands from encroachment, land grabbing or unauthorized private development within Busia County. Six, the details of the project, including the initial timeline for completion, whether due process was followed in tendering and procurement. Senator Andrew Omthatta Koeti, MP, Senator from Busia County, first October twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, sir. I request for a statement on child labor and exploitation in pursuant to Standing Order fifty-three, one, to seek a statement from the Standing Committee. Original concern regarding the alarming rise of child labor and the growing number of street children in cities and towns countrywide. Mr. Speaker, sir, children as young as seven years old around are working as hookers and vendors, often forced in the streets and into this exploitative trade by parent abuse and long-life harm, contrary to Article fifty-three of the Constitution, which guarantees children protection from abuse and exploitative labor and the right to parental care and education. In the statement, the committee should address the following. One, the steps taken by the relevant ministries, including gender, culture and children's services, interior and national administration and education to eliminate child labor and ensure all children are enrolled and retained in schools. Two, whether there is an ongoing mapping of street children across major cities and towns, if so, the fund sizes. Number three, measures being implemented to rehabilitate these children and provide them with safe homes as well as reintegrating them into education and society. Number four, interventions to hold accountable those who exploit or force children into labor, including parents, guardians and employers. Number five, policies or programs in place to strengthen. number five, policies or programs in place to strengthen social protection for vulnerable families so that poverty does not continue to push children onto the streets. Thank you.
Senator Seki. Senator Seki?
Request for a statement on the proposed sale of shares in East Africa Portland Cement to Kalahari Cement Limited. Honorable Speaker, I rise pursuant to standing order 53 one to seek a statement from the Standing Committee on Trade, Industrialization, and Tourism on the matter of national concerns regarding the proposed sale of significant stake in East Africa Portland Cement to Kalahari Cement Limited. Honorable Speaker, the East African Portland Cement, one of the Kenya oldest cement factory, is a strategic national asset that has historically contributed to infrastructure development, industrial growth, and employment creation. The company is partly government-owned with a big public investment through the National Security Fund, NSSF. Kalahari Cement Limited has entered into a binding agreement to acquire approximately 29.2% of the authorized shares of East Africa Portland, currently held by Cement Holding, by Cementia Holdings AG and Associated International Cement Limited. Both subsidiaries of the Holziam Group, which is affiliated to Bamburi Cement Company, if concluded, the deal will result to Kalahari Cement through its association with Bamburi Cement, controlling a combination of 1.7% stake in East Africa Portland Cement. This proposed sale raises significant concern with respect to transparency, governance, and public accountability. In the statement, the committee should address the following: the due diligence undertaken in the proposed sale and the safeguard to protect the shares interest of key stakeholders, including the National Security Fund, NSSF, taxpayers, and employees; two, whether public participations and stakeholders engagement, as stipulated in Article 2232.1d of the Constitution, has been undertaken in the proposed sale of such magnitude, given the significance of government stakeholding in East Africa Portland Cement. Measures being taken to secure the livelihood of employees and mitigate potential jobs losses resulting from the plan; four, to extend to the extent of Bamburi Cement interest and influence of the proposed transaction through its inflections with Holziam Group and association with Kalahari Cement. Steps the government is taking to ensure that strategic national assets are managed transparently to protect the national interest and enhance accountability and fair competition, especially in the cement industry. Thank you, Honorable Speaker.
Now, Honorable Senators, I will allow comments for not more than fifteen minutes. Senator Ledama. Senator Osotzi. Certainly, you're not there when I was reading the guidelines on how you should, on what to do to catch the speaker's eye. You raise your hand. Don't switch on your microphone, just raise your hand. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise to support the statement by the distinguished senator, Senator Osotzi, on the forceful eviction of traders at Luanda Market in Vihiga County. Mr. Speaker, there is a balance between development and ownership of property, there is also a balance between private property and public property. I've listened to the statement which has been raised by my colleague, and it raises serious concerns that we must be able to address. The highway between Kisumu-Vihiga-Busia, all the way to Uganda, is very, very important for the development of our region. Now, every county, Mr. Speaker, all the forty-seven counties, a lot of our traders occupy land which is public land, land that is owned by the Kenya National Highway Authority. The issues that are raised in this statement, Mr. Speaker, are important issues that when they are looked into, the question of ownership is definitely going to be unique, because I've seen the issues that have been raised, which, of course, I'd like to get more details on it. One, which is very important, is whether the land in question lies within the road reserve. Mr. Speaker, when this matter happened, there was a lot of drama, particularly in Marseno, where people came in and they say that the last time that Kenya gave notice that traders would be evicted from the road reserve was back in 2018. So the question is, at what point should we agree as county governments to be able to build markets that our people can actually be able to move in? Because if we want development, should we honestly, as defenders of devolution, be asking, or should we be emotive in the matter of when traders are moved from the highway? Mr. Speaker, when you drive on this road, coming all the way from where we are staying, and I'm so happy that we have come to Busia today, you will find a long, long, long line of trucks that are waiting to clear, for them to be able to clear to get into Uganda. Should we honestly be asking whether it is humane for traders to trade in road reserve? Or would we be asking the big question, what county governments are doing to be able to accommodate these traders, or maybe even divert the traffic route from the main highway? Mr. Speaker, these are very, very important questions that we must ask. I know we represent our people, and we want to support our people, so find a balance between development, accepting redevelopment of our country, and also maintaining the mediocrity of allowing I want to reiterate on, is whether the Kenya National Highway Authority has a legal redress mechanism available for processing complaints from the affected person. Mr. Speaker, yes, we have to be humane, but ask yourself one question: if today I come and I decide to build my stall in front of your building, and it is your private property, should I actually be putting a mechanism in place to be able to address your concerns, yet you are the one who have encroached in my land and territory, in my private place? So let us not kid ourselves, we have to ask. Syrian, the right Honorable Raile Amolodinga, was the cabinet secretary or the minister for transport, and he was, he made serious decisions to be able to expand the Mombasa highway. People went to court, you know, people brought a lot of concern, the same thing applies to the Red Hill Road that goes all the way to Nyari, the village market. People were bitter, in fact, there are people who are still in court until today, but everyone today in our generation is very happy that that happened, because the transport, the distance between Nairobi and Mombasa was reduced. Those people who live in Mombasa, in Machakos County, you can now get to Machakos within seventeen minutes of the express highway. So as we come into our counties and we raise concern, the big question that we must raise is, what do we need to do to be able to address and accommodate every trader along the highway? And the question is very simple, and I'd like the committee, when they are looking at this matter, to proceed and look at the issue of whether the county governments of Vihiga, Kisumu, and Busia have gazetted public markets, and whether those markets have been assigned to individuals, not road reserves. In fact, this is an opportunity, Mr. Speaker, for us to call upon every county government to move expeditiously and remove everybody who has occupied road reserves. Let us leave roads reserved for them to become areas of expansion. We are growing, Mr. Speaker, we now have a population clocking about sixty million in this country.
You've got less than a minute, Honorable Speaker.
With sixty million, Mr. Speaker, thank you. We have to be realistic, unfortunately. Let us call as fast as we can. Let's leave road reserves for the expansions of our roads so that we can enhance trade, particularly in this region, Mr. Speakers, I conclude. We want to make it easy for us to trade between Uganda and Kenya. It is wrong in the twenty-first century, in 2025, that we still have a long queue of trucks waiting to be cleared, because even the road is very small. So, Mr. Speaker, I support the statement, but I wish the committee would go further and get into the hidden questions that are hidden in this
Senator Catherine Muma. Now, Senators wishing to speak will do so under three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, for that opportunity to speak. Mr. Speaker, I would request that you indulge me with two minutes to just say something about being in Busia. You are welcomed by Senator Haluare and Senator Osotzi, and Senator Haluare did not acknowledge that I come from this region. This is a predominant culture in this area, sometimes they don't see the women, but I want to confirm that I am a daughter of Western Kenya and I come from this region. Honorable Speaker, I also wish to add that he also standards, human standard he did not acknowledge that this is the, and Uganda, everybody knows that the most humble leader we ever had in this country, political leader, is Uncle Moody Awori. Honorable Speaker, he also failed to acknowledge the Honorable Julia Ojumbo.
Honorable Catherine Muma, tomorrow this region, so you'll have an opportunity, they've been invited, they will be here, and we will be celebrating them as they watch. So
Thank you, Honorable Speaker, I really appreciate me, but allow me to just say a little, something little about
is the distinguished Senator Catherine Muma in order to misrepresent facts. If indeed she is a daughter of this community, and which I know she is, Mr. Speaker Under what standing order? One of five, Mr. Speaker. If indeed she is a daughter of this community, and I do agree that she is a daughter of this community, why is she misrepresenting facts? Mr. Speaker, in this community, once you get married, you cease being the community, you belong, Mr. Speaker, you belong to the community where you are married. Order, 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 Honorable Senator Boni, Senator Boni, just take your seat. Thank you, take your seat. Order, Honorable Senators, order. Honorable Senators, order. Order, Honorable Senators. Order, Honorable Senators. Order. Now, Honorable Senators, you are disorderly, and your shouting will not address the issue that has been raised. Now, Honorable Boni Haluare, if you read the Constitution, yes, it actually accommodates customary practices and values, but those that are repugnant are not acknowledged. So
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
It is, it is the ruling of the chair, that that particular culture, to the extent, to the extent that it offends. Order, Senator from Nairobi City Council. Let me, order, Honorable Senator, let me hear, let me hear this Senator from Nairobi City Council. And you're not on a point of order, you're just trying to, I've allowed you to make your intervention, because I can see you are from this area and you are hurt by the statement
Chair, Chair, I just wanted to warn that you are waddling into a very dangerous territory, because I do not think that culturally you have powers to determine what is culturally right amongst the people of Molembi. Honorable Speaker, with due respect, when we come to the Mijikenda, then maybe you are an elder there, together with, but on this one, I think it's dangerous territory, because the next thing, the next thing, I'll be told that my wife doesn't belong to me, Honorable Speaker, she belongs somewhere else. I think let the elder, Haluare, guide us on this one.
Now, Honorable Senators, for purposes of this sitting, for purposes of this sitting, and for purposes of these proceedings, we will go by their session by the Honorable Kathy, Catherine Muma, thus indeed she is a daughter of this region. So proceed, proceed. She has temporarily relocated to another region, but she remains a daughter of this region. Proceed, Honorable Catherine.
Speaker, thank you so much for respecting the constitution of Kenya. I am sure the elders in Western Kenya are watching, and they will be appalled that anybody can purport to speak for them in the manner in which Honorable Haluare has done. Be that as it may be, I was saying Julia Ojumbo was the first female African student at University of Nairobi. She was the first Kenyan woman to join Harvard University. She was the first African woman to receive a PhD from the University of Nairobi. She was the first assistant, woman assistant minister in Kenya, first female member of parliament in, from Western Kenya, and she also ran as vice president for Kalonzo Msioka. Of course, the men will never recognize that, so allow me to do this. Honorable Speaker, I now want to contribute to two of the statements. One of the statements, Honorable Speaker, please protect me. I want to speak to two of the, my time, surely, Honorable Haluare took all my time. Honorable Speaker, I want to speak to the issue of Muluanda border points raised by Honorable Umthata. I would want to call on the Senate to help us to strengthen the intergovernmental relations between national governments and county governments. I believe Busia County, being a border county, is one such county where we should actually model better intergovernmental relations. For instance, forty percent of patients in the Busia hospitals come from Uganda, come from South Sudan, Sudan, and elsewhere, and a number of the other services actually used by people across the border. This would have been a good place for us to be able to demonstrate a good intergovernmental relations, where we have cooperation, for instance, with the Ministry of Health, to put a strong referral hospital here, to put a strong mechanism to guard against pandemics because of cross-border movement, and also because of cross-border movement and also therefore what Honorable Omata is talking about in terms, the border point is an important issue that I request that the Senate fully takes up to deal with. I also finally want to contribute to the statement by Senator Mirage on child labor. Honorable Speaker, I think we have dropped the ball in relation to our children. Children aged twenty-four and below are fifty-nine percent of this country. When you comes to thirty-five and below, seventy percent. We have young ten-year-olds hawking everywhere in the streets. We don't know who's dealing with this. We, I want to request again, this is a multi-sectoral issue. We must remember the issue of children is not issue the way it is being treated to.
Senator Oburu.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, sir, I rise to make a comment on the statement sought by Honorable Kea Omata on the ring road around Lake Victoria. Mr. Speaker, sir, this is a road which is long overdue. Mr. Speaker, this road, speaking about this road started immediately after independence. And, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the road was supposed to be accomplished with a comprehensive irrigation scheme, which was to go around the lake and we were supposed to tap the lake, the raw waters from Lake Victoria and pump it up, up, up in the, on the hellocks and bring it down to do irrigation so that we would have a permanent food reserve in our area. Our area was supposed to be a food reserve for the whole of the country, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, when Raila Odinga, my brother, was a minister of roads, they proposed this road and we went round the whole of East Africa. Mr. Speaker, I was that time minister, I mean, as chairman of Finance Committee of the National Assembly, and this road is not only for Kenya, this road starts, is supposed to go around Tanzania and Uganda. And we went round, we drove. This road, once it is opened, Mr. Speaker, it will open up development in the whole of the Lake Region and it will connect the three countries. And, Mr. Speaker, the World Bank was ready to fund this road, the development of this road. The only hindrance we have to the development of this road in Kenya, particularly, Mr. Speaker, is greed. People who are land grabbers, when they hear that a road is supposed to pass in a certain area, they go and buy it quickly from unsuspecting one inch and then quickly now raise the price so that it cannot happen, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, this is what has also made it difficult for Kenya to acquire the road, the pipeline, which is supposed to come from Uganda through to Kenya and connect to ours. Mr. Speaker, this is because.
Honorable Speaker, because just in the next three weeks we'll be hosting all the county assemblies, Mr. Speaker, and I really encourage senators to participate. They have their Mbonkames in Mero. From the, I think, the twentieth, I was in discussion with Honorable Speakers and really they want also senators to participate. But, Mr. Speaker, even you, I've been with you since yesterday and we have really enjoyed our stay here. Mr. Speaker, one other thing that I have really noticed in these communities, they have enough food, a lot of food. And therefore, Mr. Speaker, because of the goal of the, of the Kenya Kwanzaa Government is to provide and to be, have enough food security, I want to thank the leadership of this county for they have really assisted the government to make sure that we have food for this country. Mr. Speaker, the road from Busia, from Vihega to here, Mr. Speaker, is very dilapidant. Even before the locality way is done, Mr. Speaker, the Kenya National Airways Authority should come with speed and repair that road. The portals are extensive and, Mr. Speaker, because of the trucks, accidents can, are really inevitable, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, I really also want to encourage Senator Osotsi to talk to your leadership and as fast as possible remove people from, from the road reserve so that you can get a better road. Because I believe the best thing is not to complain. If the government has given you a superhighway and a highway, remove people from the, from the road reserve so that the road can be constructed. I think nobody should live in the, on the road reserves. And you are doing the service. People from Vihega, people in Busia want to enjoy that road, Mr. Speaker. So Senator Osotsi, lead the way and make sure that the road is cleared so that development can be done by the Kenya Kwanzaa Government before the twenty-twenty-seven elections, Honorable Speaker.
Senator Enok Wombo.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I want to begin by thanking the beautiful daughter of the Luya community, Senator Muma, who is also a loved wife of the community of Senator Kajuan. I want to thank, Mr. Speaker, for recognizing the exemplary demonstration of true leadership by His Excellency Dr. Stephen Kalonzo Mousioka when he ran for president and nominated Professor Julia Ojumbo as his running mate. The Speaker, I don't want to be seen to be a dispetting debate, but tomorrow when Professor Julia Ojumbo appears, the Speaker will be seeking the attention of the Chair to say a few things about Professor Julia Ojumbo. Having said that, the Speaker, I want to commend on the statement on the Kenya National Highways Authority and the relocation of traders along the road reserves. The Speaker, we can argue and debate that matter. But, Speaker, of greater importance to me, because I've just come from a sitting of the County Public Accounts Committee of Busia, where we have so many trucks parked right outside this assembly, the Speaker. This county government is not allowed to collect fees from these trucks transiting through the county and then interfering with the business of this place, the Speaker. The Speaker, I think as a Senate, one of the things that I would encourage us to do maybe through the area, Senator, is to find a way of the county government of Busia to get some cash, some revenue from these trucks, the Speaker. A simple calculation, I've seen that they have said they have one thousand eight hundred trucks transiting through these county headquarters every day. If they were to charge only a thousand shillings of transit fee, that will be one point eight million Kenya shillings every day, translating to fifty-four million Kenya shillings in a month and six hundred and forty-eight million Kenya shillings in a year. The Speaker, one of the things that we always say about county governments is that we blame them for not looking for revenue streams, for all sorts of revenue. Mr. Speaker. That's out of order now. So, the Speaker.
Order, your point of order, Senator. I'm sorry, but I have to, I raise understanding order number one of five on the statement of facts. The constitution is quite clear on the kind of taxes that county governments can collect and the taxes that the national government can collect. If the distinguished senator is now asking Busia County to charge truckers here, what will Kisumu do? What will Eldore do? So by the time your businesses are doing, are working here, all the way to Nairobi, truckers will be paying millions of shillings. Is that really what we want to do? So, Mr. Speaker, the constitution is clear. County governments can only collect stipulated revenues, which are also transferred to the County Government Finance Act. So let us not confuse the country. So is the distinguished senator in order to mislead the nation that Vihega or Busia County can actually charge truckers moving from Uganda to Nairobi? Senator Olakina, your point of order is overruled. The county governments under schedule four, they can charge for parking fees. Any truck wishing to park within the county government, they will pay parking fees. Senator Enok, proceed, proceed to conclude your remarks.
Mr. Speaker, you know, it's a good thing when a senator admits laziness. Because I just said, Mr. Speaker, we should find innovative ways of helping the county government of Busia to collect some revenue from these trucks. The Speaker, truth be told, these trucks, they interfere with business in Busia Town. Truth be told. Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker.
Order, Honorable Senators, may the Senator for Kibwe be heard in silence. Proceed.
Mr. Speaker, Mr. Speaker, you know, I have not made a ruling. I'm just making, I'm giving an opinion. So if you find my opinion not palatable, when you get your chance, give your opinion. Maybe you don't even have an opinion now, Senator. There's a speaker. The second, the second issue was on the sale of strategic investment in the name of the portland cement, the East African portland cement. The Speaker, we must find a way of taming this appetite to sell our strategic investments.
Yes. Unfortunately, the Honorable Senator had long concluded, had long concluded his, his issue. Senator, Majority Leader, what is your intervention?
Mention to the House, in the sense that I know the clerk's office is working on the communication, but at SBC this morning, you know, we made a decision that this matter, which I see colleagues are very passionate about on the issue of the Busia border and Malaba, shall actually be discussed here extensively via motion because the Trade Committee visited both station and the cohesion. And therefore tomorrow morning, we have a motion to discuss this matter extensively. So I wanted the House to be in the know, there's no need to trade babs at this point. We shall have sufficient time tomorrow morning. And also lastly, Mr. Speaker, I hope later you shall inform the House of what time we shall be visiting that station before the House resumes tomorrow morning. I thank you.
It is true what the Majority Leader has just indicated. This matter was extensively discussed at SBC and it was found proper that a substantive motion be brought tomorrow so that Honorable Senators will have an opportunity to discuss this substantively. And again, we also indicated during that meeting that for Honorable Senators to be in a position to debate that motion effectively, they need to understand the workings of the border post. And therefore, it has been agreed that tomorrow between seven thirty AM to nine AM, Senators will have an opportunity beyond the two committees that are visited there, the entire House will have an opportunity to go to the border post so that as we debate the motion tomorrow, you will be debating on a point of knowledge. Senator Veronica.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker, for this opportunity. I want to give a comment on the statement that has been brought to this House by Senator Mirage on the children who are in our streets in different counties in Kenya. And I want to specifically comment on the children, the status of the children in Busia County. Honorable Speaker, unfortunately, beyond the children who are on the streets, the problem is more complex. They are not only being given child labor from the streets, they are also being burdened with responsibility, parental responsibility of taking care of infants when they are between the age of eleven, even ten years. We have found pregnant teens, teenagers in Busia County numbering about four thousand five hundred and sixty-two or something thereabouts, that number of teenagers who are having to handle infants at their very tender age, Honorable Speaker. It is unfortunate that we are no longer considering as communities what is the best interest of these children. Children don't just land in the streets. We must ask ourselves, and as this committee is looking into this complex issue, we must answer the question of where are these children who are landing in the streets coming from? Are they coming from broken families? Are they coming from situations where, Honorable Speaker, has rendered these children to survive on the streets trying to raise income that they need, Honorable Speaker? What are the schools doing about the children who are falling out of school? We might reach a situation where every county government will have to now take account for the children within their counties who are on the streets, Honorable Speaker, in the best interest of children, Honorable Speaker. It will be be fitting for this Senate to consider that complex question because where are these children who are in the streets going to be five years from now when they turn into teenagers? When they turn eighteen, what does this, this society expect these children to turn out to be? Are we waiting for children to turn into small gangsters and eventually turn into the huge gangs you might find on the streets, Honorable Speaker? And yet, when these questions are raised, they sound simple, they sound as though they should not be given a lot of attention. If you look at the debate which has been raised in this House today, I believe highways are important, infrastructure is important, but the family unit and the welfare of children and the people of Kenya is equally very important. If you look at the number of senators who are commenting on the highway and unfortunately the male gender, yet they are the fathers of these children who are on the streets, you will find they are more interested in the roads. They are not interested in the cohesion and family. Time has come, Honorable Speaker, for this House to have a committee called Gender and Family Committee.
Senator Funadi, there's nothing disorder in that.
To sort out, to sort out the issues, Honorable Speaker, to sort out the issues we have in this nation. It will be important for Parliament to have a committee known as Gender and Family Committee. We look at the issues that have broken down in the family. Honorable Speaker.
Conclude.
All these issues will be resolved. We will be able to resolve our roads when we resolve the family matters.
Your, your time is up, Honorable. No, unfortunately not. Now, Honorable Senators, we have, we have, we have gone beyond the fifteen minutes that I had indicated. Honorable Senators, we have done double of the time I had earlier indicated. We will therefore rest it at that. However, before I allow the clerk to call his next order, I'd wish to confirm that Honorable Rafael Wanjala, Member of Parliament for Budalangi constituency, is in the House. Honorable, thank you. Also, Honorable Mary Emase, Member of Parliament for Tesos South, is in the House. And also Honorable Jofri Mulanya, Member of Parliament for Namale constituency. Honorable Members of Parliament, welcome to the Senate plenary. Now, Honorable Senators, at this juncture, allow me, allow me to rearrange today's order of the. pursuant to standing order forty-five-two. We will now proceed to order number, order number nine. Order number nine, so I will ask the clerk to call that order. Order number nine, motion, report of the Standing Committee on Finance and Budgets on the County Government's Equitable Share Cash Disbursement Schedule for Financial Year 2025-2026, Division. Sergeant Adams kindly ring the division bell for two minutes.
The kurram bell is now ringing at the Senate this afternoon following the directives by the Speaker of the Senate, Honourable Amazon Kingi, who has directed the sitting terms to ring the kurram bell for ten minutes, for two minutes rather, for the House to consider the report of the Standing Committee on Finance and Budgets on the County Government's Equitable Share Cash Disbursement Schedule for the Financial Year 2025-2026. The debate on this motion being a motion that is seeking to have the Senate adopt the report of the Standing Committee on Finance on the County Government's Equitable Share Cash Disbursement for the Financial Year 2025-2026 has already been concluded upon. The committee laid its report on the table of the Senate on the twenty-fourth day of September 2025 and that pursuant to section seventeen, subsection seven of the Public Finance Management Act and standing orders one eighty-nine, subsection three, the Senate approves the County Government's Equitable Share of the Disbursement Schedule for the Financial Year 2025-2026. Upon the lapse of that kurram bell that has been allocated two minutes, the House will be voting on this motion. An additional four minutes have been given and these four minutes leeway is for senators who have stepped outside the County Assembly's chamber in Busia County where the Senate... Well, that division bell is an alert to senators within Busia County Assembly presence to make their way back into the chambers where the Senate will be considering its plenary business for the better part of this week, this being the inaugural sitting of the Senate in Busia County. On this very first day, the House has already deliberated on a number of business before the senators, among them being the issue of transport along the Malaba border, the institution of family with senators raising a number of issues that they will want the committees, the respective committees where these statements have been directed to, to address. But at this particular juncture, the Senate is considering the report of the Standing Committee on Finance and Budgets on the County Government's Equitable Share Cash Disbursement Schedule for the Financial Year 2025-2026. The House will shortly be voting on this motion to adopt the proposals in the reports. And remember, this is the report that is proposing the equitable share of revenue to different counties.
Sergeant Adams kindly close the door and draw the bar. Now, Honourable Senators, voting shall be by roll call. I know you are used to the one that we vote and under one minute we are done, but this one will be manual because we'll do it by roll call. And therefore, we will need the tailors, a tailor for the nays and a tailor for the yes. Senator Mirage will be the tailor for the yes, for the eyes. And Senator Montet will be the tailor for the nays. Kindly take your positions before I put the question. Thank you. I will now proceed to put the question. That the Senate adopts the report of the Standing Committee on Finance and Budgets on the County Government's Equitable Share Cash Disbursement Schedule for Financial Year 2025-2026 laid on the table of the Senate on Wednesday twenty-fourth of September 2025 and that pursuant to section seventeen-seven of the Public Finance Management Act and standing order one eighty-nine-three, the Senate approves the County Government's Equitable Share Cash Disbursement Schedule for Financial Year 2025-2026. Now, the clerk is going to call the names of the senators in alphabetical order. Clerk, you may proceed. Senator Abbas Sheikh Mohammed Wajir County. Senator Adan Dulo Fatuma Isiolo County. Senator Boy Isa Juma Kualia County. Senator Jerarke Samson Nandi County.
Mr. Speaker, I vote, is it yes? Yes, I vote yes.
Senator Jerry O'Theeron Kipkirui Kerijio County.
Mr. Speaker, Kerijio votes yes.
Senator Chesang Alan Kiprotich Tranzoya County. Senator Chute Mohamed Said Marsabit County. Senator Ekomwa James Lomenen Trukana County. Senator Haji Abdul Mohamed Garissa County. Senator Kadjuang Moses Otieno Homabay County.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Kamau Joseph Gidoku Lamu County.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Kathuri Murungi Meru County.
Honourable Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Kerochi Tabitha Karanja Nakuru County. Senator Haluale Boni Kakamega County.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Kisang William Kipkemoi Elgeo Marakwet County.
Good, Elgeo Marakwet County, votes yes. Honourable Speaker.
Senator Lelegwe Steven Lutumbesi, Senator Lelegwe Steve Lutumbesi Samburu County. Senator Maanzo Daniel Kitonga Makweni County. Senator Mazayo Stewat Mwachiru Kilifi County. Senator Mandago Jackson Kiplagat Wasinigish County.
Honourable Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Medhu John Mohia Nyandarua County.
Mr. Speaker, sir, on behalf of Nyandarua, I vote yes.
Senator Mogeni Eric Okongo Nyamira County. Senator Mundiki Alexander Muny Embu County.
Honourable Speaker, Embu County votes yes.
Senator Mungatana Danson Buya Tanariva County.
Mr. Speaker, Tanariva votes yes. Thank you.
Senator Murango James Kamau Kirinyaga County. Senator Mudama Agnes Cavindu Machakos County.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of Machakos County, I vote yes.
Senator Muaruma Jones Muaxusha Tayta Taveta County.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Muenda Gataya Mofaya Tharakanithi County.
Mr. Speaker, Tharakanithi votes yes.
Senator Mwenihaji Mohammed Faki Mombasa County.
Mr. Speaker, sir, Mombasa votes yes.
Senator Nderito John Kenwa Laikipiya County.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Nyotu Joe Moranga County. Senator Ojienda Odiambo Tom Kisumu County. Senator Oginga Oburu Saya County.
Mr. Speaker, sir, Saya County votes yes.
Senator Okech Edi Giteru Migori County. Senator Okoiti Andrew Omthata Busia County.
Busia County votes yes.
Senator Olekinale Dama Narok County.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the people of Narok, I vote yes.
Senator Onyonka Richard Momoyma Kisi County. Senator Osotsi Godfrey Atieno Vihiga County.
Mr. Speaker, the great people of Vihiga vote yes.
Senator Reja Julius Murgol Westfocote County.
Mr. Speaker, Westfocote votes yes.
Senator Roba Ali Ibrahim Mandera County.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of Mandera County, I vote yes.
Senator Seki Lenku Olekanal Kadjado County.
Honourable Speaker, people of Kadjado vote yes.
Senator Sifuna Edwin Watena Nairobi County.
Honourable Speaker, I vote yes.
Senator Dangwa Paul Karungo Kianbo County. Senator Wafula David Wakoli Bungoma County. Senator Wakili Hillary Kiprotich Sigei. Senator Wamatinga Wahome Nyeri County. Senator Wambua Enok Kiyo Kithui County.
Mr. Speaker, for and on behalf of the people of Kithui County, I vote yes.
Now, Honourable Senators, the result of the division on order number nine, the results are as follows: ayes at twenty-six, votes, nays zero and abstentions zero. So the ayes have it. Now, Sergeant Adams, you may now, with the draw the band, open the doors. Honourable Senators, we will move to order number eight. Order number eight. Clerk kindly read that order. Order number eight, motion, report of the Standing Committee on Devolution and Intergovernmental Relations on a petition to the Senate by Mr. Jafed Makoha, the Executive Director of Tripor, the Impact CBO, to amend the County Government's Act 2012 on the mandate of the county governors assigned...
on the mandate of the county governors' assigning portfolio of a county executive committee member to the deputy governors'. Question to be put. Now, honorable senators, the debate on this particular order had been concluded. What was remaining was the putting of the question. Clerk, do we have the requisite number of honorable senators? We do? I will therefore proceed to put the question. That the Senate adopts the report of the Standing Committee on Devolution and Intergovernmental Relations on a petition to the Senate by Mister Japheth Makoha, the Executive Director of Tripul the Impact CBO, to amend the County Government's Act 2012 on the mandate of the county governors' assigning portfolio of a county executive committee member to the deputy county governors laid on the table of the Senate on Thursday, twenty-fifth of September, twenty-twenty-five. Will as many as of that opinion say aye? Will as many as of the contrary opinion say nay? The ayes have it. Next order. Order number ten. The County Hall of Fame Bill, Senate Bills Number Eighteen of Twenty-Twenty-Three, second reading. Senator Miraja Abdillah.
Mheshimiwa Speaker, na omba kutoa hodia ya kuamba mswada wa ukumi wa umarufu katika county, mswada wa seneti namba kumi na nani wa moka elifumbili shirinatano usome kwa marapili. Mheshimiwa Speaker. Moka wa elifumbili na kumi katiba ya Kenya ilianzisha mfumo wa serekali. Mfumo wa serekali gatuzi ambao ulitambua. Kitambulisha cha kipeke cha utamaduni na mechango ya county zetu arubainna saba. Hata hivyo, ugatuzi hauhusu tu uhamishwaji uamajukumu na raslimali bali pia inahusu. Kusharekeya mashudja mabingwa wetu ambao wameunda county.
Let's let the melange be handed in silence. You know she's reasoning herself.
Asante, bona speaker. Hata hivyo, ugatuzi hauhusu tu uhamishadi uamajukumu na raslimali bali pia unahusu kusharekeya mashudja na mabingwa wetu. Ambao wameunda county zetu za kitaifa na jukumu la kuipatia. Huduma zao za kipeke. Kujitolea na mafanikio. Yao yatakayo husishwa na ushudja kiujumla kupitia huduma zao za kipeke. Buonas Speaker. Tunaenda kuangamiza historia hi naturasi yambazo hawa mashudja wetu wamifanya katika gatuzi zetu. Hivyo basi, kutakuwa na pengo la kihistoria la yale ambao wao wameyafanya kama mashudja wetu. Kumbukumbu zetu zinaenda kuzoofika na vizazi vina vekujia havitakuwa na sehemu ya kuona kuamba ninani alifania nini gatuzi zetu. Mheshimiwa Speaker, leo nasimama kwa majivuno. Fahari na wajibu mku kwasilisha mswada wa ukumi wa umarufu katika county zetu. Ili usugulikiwe na dyumba hili la seneti mashuhuri. Ili kwa sababu, mswada hu kipetishwa. Hau takua tu kipande chengine cha sheria lakini utakuwa mswada ambao. Utakuwa chombo cha mabadiliko kinacho lenga kuheshimu na kutukuza ubora huko mashinanimetu. Kwa kuanzisha mfumo, utaka uezecha serekali za county kukuzi watu walio leta umarufu sifa na maendeleo kaza wa kaza katika county zetu. Mheshimiwa Speaker, mswada wa ukumi wa umarufu katika county zetu. Unalenga kuziba pengo ambalo litatambuliwa kwa kuyzinisha mfumo mpana. Wa kutambua watu binasi katika ngazi ya county. Mswada hu unalenga, bona speaker, utambuzi wa umarufu katika county zetu. Kuahesimo watu binasi, walio chaguwa pa kubwa. Walio changia pa kubwa katika county za nchi yetu. Kwa kuhakikisha ubora wa kusharekewa katika kila ngazi ya utawala na katika kila kiwango cha kitaifa. Pili, kodumisha turasi za kitamaduni. Kuanzisha kumbehizi za umarufu, bona speaker, katika county zetu. Kama hifazi za historia na utamaduni naturasi zetu. Kutahakikisha kuwa na hazina ya matukio ya kila county inayo hifaziwa kwa ajili ya vizazi vidjavio. Buonas Speaker. Kuhamasisha vizazi vidjavio. Mapendekezo ya sheria hi, bona speaker, itakuwa kielelezo cha kuigwa. Na mifano ya kupigwa ubora katika ngazi za ugatuzi. Ambazo vidjana wanaweza kuiga na kuzihirisha kuwa ushudja na mafanikio ya kila county inahifaziwa kwa ajili ya vizazi vidjavio. Tatoo, bona speaker, kuimalisha upeke wa county. Kukuzi hisia kubwa na kujivunia na fahari kwa kusharekeya mechango na mafanikio ya kipeke ya inayo tambulisha mwelekeo naturasi za kila county. Mheshimiwa Speaker, kule Mombasa, tuko na vidjana mahiri. Vidjana ambao ameweza kupambana na janga la mihadarati. Kidjana kuadina Taiba Abdurrahman. Amekua ni kidjana wa kwanza. Kuonesha ukakamavu na ushudja. Kuanzisha zikao zeka kuweza kuzungumza na wale walio asirika. Na mpaka sasa, hata serekali ku imeweza kukana e, bona Taiba Abdurrahman, ambayo ndomo asisi wa reach out center ambayo imesaedia wa raibu wengi kurudi katika njia na barabara ili osawa. Buonas Speaker, mapendekezo ya sheria hi inaenda kuimalisha na kukuzi utali na elimu katika gatuzi zetu. Inaenda kuunda vituovya masomo na utali. Tamaduni utaka elimisha wa kahazi kuhusu historia yao na kuwa na uezekano wa kuzalisha mapatu ya kuendekeza county zetu. Buonas Speaker, ukiangalia hivi sasa. Wakati waziri alikuja katika bungele tu la seneti dyuma lilopita. Alisema ya kuamba, tamaduni imekuwa ni kivutio kikubwa cha kuongeza idadi ya watali katika taifaletu. Ndiposa, wakati tutakuwa na sheria hi. Itaweka samamba mikakati ya kuonesha nikitugani na nitamaduni gani za hidi inavutia kwa mifano huku yimbo la maharibi la zamani. Tunajuwa kunaulemchezo wa ngombe kupigana alimarufu kama bullfighter kwa luga ya kingenge. Kule kuetu lamu, Mombasa, na hata kuali. Unaweza kujionea turasi nyangi sana. Milango ambayo imejengwa, ime tengezwa kwa ulimbende wa hali ya ju. Milango ambayo ingeweza kuwashiria huyu ninifani biya shara wa bawabu. Huyu ninifani biya shara wa samaki na huyu ninifani biya shara wa hivyo. Hivyo basi, na weza kuwashaishi maseneta wenzango. Wa ezekuunga mkonu. Sheria hi ili tuweze kupata vitega uchumi haswa katika halmashauri yetu ya utali. Mheshimiwa Speaker, kila county katika nchi yetu tukufu. Inayo watu ambao wanatambulika kupitia utowadi na huduma mahsusi kwa ubonifu uongozzi na hata kwa kujitolea. Kuanzishwa kwa mwalimu washule kule county garisa ili oamrisha viwango. Viangovya elimu katika jamii. Mahudumu afia katika county ya turkana. Aliye tekeleza majukumu yake kwa uadilifu. Licha ya mazingira magumo, mdyasiri ya malikutoka kule mainewa gatuzi ya nyeri. Aliye towa nafasi za kazi na kuchangia ukuzadi wa uchumi hadi kwa mifazi watamaduni katika county ya lamu. Aliye ditolea kuhakikisha kuamba, tamaduni zetu zinalindwa na wahitaji kutambuliwa. Mswada hu, bona speaker. Unapendekeza kuboniwa kamati ya uteuzi katika kila county yetu. Itakayo jumishia watu wanao hesimika. Wakiwemo mawaziri wa county zetu. Wanao husika na masuala ya utamaduni naturasi. Katika katibu wa bunge na county. Mwenyekiti wa body ya huduma za uma ya county na maafisa wa uma wataka utauliwa. Kamati hii tia kikisha, bona speaker, ya kuamba. Uteuzi unafaniwa kwanjia ya uazi. Shirkishi na kuzingatia sifa navigezo maalum. Katika mchakato utaka husisha uma kwanjia ya mikutano na kwasilishwa kwa nyaraka za maoni. Buonas Speaker, kipengele hiki. Kinaenda kuweka kikuazo kwa wale vyongozi bazi. Ambao wanafikiri ya kuamba ni marafiki nadiamaza pekeao. Wanas tahili kopewa sifa hizi kede kede za kuwa wamifanya mambo katika gatuzi zetu. Bali, kipengele hiki, kita weza kuweka kupigya msasa. Kuweka uazi wa kuhakikisha ya kuamba wanao uweka madina yao katika kumbehizi na kusharekewa nadiamii zetu katika gatuzi. Ni wale vyongozi ambao wameweza kufanya mambo na bila ubaguzi waka weza kuweka katika kumbehizo. Za hidi ya hayo, bona speaker. Mswada wa umarufu kuamba, serekali za county. Zinaweza kutiaua majengo maalum ya uma ya liopo na kusamamisha miundo mipia ili kutumeka kama kumbi za umarufu. Na kuhakikisha unyumbufu katika utikeleza dihu za kidumisha hazi na udumifu wahesima. Zile zinazo tahili. Mfumo hu unajumishia vyfungu via kuhifazi vitu via kihistoria na sana kuunda makumbusho ambayo kusharekeya siyo watu binasi tu bali hata turasi pana kwa kila gatuzi zetu. Mheshimiwa Speaker, ili niweze kuajulisha wenzango za hidi na zungumzia nini ni napo zungumzia kuhifazi turasi zetu. Kule Mombasa, kule Kilifi. Utapata kuamba, turasi ama vazi ambalo linapendo sana na watu wa kilifi. Ni kisutu lakini ni vazi ambalo hivi sasa watu wote wa kimejikenda wanajivunia kualu. Isipokuwa kule kuali na jamii ndogo ya wadigo katika gatuzi yetu ya kuali. Wango yao naturasi yao ni kikoi kile charangi ya samawati. Ndiposa sasa, tutaweza kujua na kutofautisha katika kumbehizi ni nguogani zinatuka gatuzi gani na niturasigani ni ya jamii gani. Mheshimiwa Speaker, kupetishwa kwa mswada hu si hitaji tu la kisheria. Ni wajibu wa kimaadili, ni wajibu wetu sisika ma vyongozi. Kuhakikisha kuamba ubora popote unapo takikana, unatambuliwa na kusharekewa. Tunapo wahesimo wale ambao ni waasisi wa mambo tofauti tofauti na kusharekeya. Bazitutakuwa tunawapa moyo wale ambao wanachipuza sasa watoto wa dogo. Wa ezekuona ya kuamba dihu ni naditihada zao hazitaambulia patupu. Bali zitakuwa katika kumbukumbu na hifazi za kihistoria katika ukumi hu wa umarufu. Tunapo hifazi historia pia, bona speaker. Turasi zetu tunawapa watoto na wadukua wetu hisia ya kuditambulisha na raslimali zao na kuli ambako wanatoka. Bazii, mheshimiwa Speaker, wanaweza kuhodi ya kuamba. Utambuzi unapasua kuachiwa kwa tuzo za kitaifa tu na kuwa county hazi hitaji kumbi zao za umarufu. Hata hivyo, ingawa utambuzi wa kitaifa ni muhimu. Hawezi kushika uiano kamili wa bora ulio katika county zetu. Watu wengi ambao umwenda hawata pokia tuzo za kitaifa. Watapata fursa ya kuweza kutambulika katika gatuzi zao na kuweza kusharekewa na yale walio yafanya kuhifaziwa katika hizi kumbi katika ugatuzi wao. Wengi ne pia, bona speaker. Wanaweza kuhodi harama ya utikelezadi wa mswada hu. Lakini tujulize, harama ni gani kusa haulika kwa mashudja wetu. Harama ni gani kuruhusu historia na utamaduni wetu kupotea. Harama ni gani ya kuwanima vidjana wetu kupata via kuigwa kutoka kwa wenyeji wao. Mswada hu, bona speaker. Unaruhusu county kutumia miundo mbino ili opo na unatoa urahisia katika utikelezadi na kuhakikisha kuwa county zenyra raslimali chache zinaweza kusiriki katika ditihada hi yenye hisima. Buonas Speaker, mswada hu unambatana kikamilifu na maadili ya kikatiba na kutambua utofauti wa Kenya na kukuzi umoja kupitia huwaa utofauti wetu. Unaimarisha ugatuzi kwa kuyawezecha na kuuezecha serekali zetu za county. Kusimulia historia zao na kusharekeya mashudja wao. Ayiza, bona speaker. Mswada hu unaimiza uazi kupitia ushirikishwaji wa uma. Na lazima katika mchakato wa uteuzi. Leo muhimu za hidi unahakikisha kuamba ubora wa hali ya ju popote unapo ibuka katika jamuhuri ya Kenya unatambuliwa ipasavio. Mheshimiwa Speaker, tupisha mswada hu ili tuchukuwa hatua ya kidyasiri. Kujenga taifa la Kenya ambalo katika kila county inajivunia mashudja wake. Kila jamii inalinda na kuendeleza urisi wake na kila kidjana ana mifano bora hapo nyumbani ya ubora wa hali ya ju. Itayo mpa msukumo katika safari yake ya kuilekeza majukumu yake makuu kwa ni taifalake. Mheshimiwa Speaker, na omba tuupetishya mswada hu na kuchukuwa hatua ya udyasiri. Kujenga Kenya ambayo kila jamii inahifazi tamaduni zake na kujivunia mashudja wake. Na kila kidjana, awe na mifano wa mashinani ambao uko karibu na eyee. Utaka umjenga imani, kumjenga kimaadili na hata pia kumjenga kiuchumi kuona ya kuamba wale walio kuwa kablayake waliweza kufungua njia ambapo mahali njia hikuwepo. Mheshimiwa Speaker, kwa ruhusa yako, uki ni ruhusu. Niweze kuwataambua mama zangu mashudja mke aliakuwa mea wetu wa Mombasa. Bi izube da sumba marehemu ambaye aliakuwa kiongozo amendelewa wanawake pale Mombasa. Ambaye ametuachia historia kubwa ya kusema kuamba wanawake wanaweza. Niweze pia kumtambua mwasisi wa uongozzi wa kike kule Mombasa. Bi Margaret Olank ambaye aliakuwa muakilishi wa kuchaguliwa katika eneo la ganjoni wa kati wakani. Mheshimiwa Speaker, wanawake kama hawa. Historia zao zinaenda kupotea. Kwa sababu tunawatambua tu wale ambao wameuika kitaifa. Ambao badu wa pohai. Napia najua. Kama si mheshimiwa Speaker, bi Senator Catherine Mumu. Kumtaja mama Fibyaseo hapa. Mama Julia Odiambo. Lapda hata kuna watu otokatika gatuzi yake hawadue yale mambo ambayo amefanyo. Lakini kupitia kumbi hiya umarufu, historia yake itaweza kuhifaziwa. Na si kusharekewa tu kimataifa bali hata wale waschana wa dogo katika county zetu. Wataweza kujua na kujipa moyo ya kuamba wanaweza kuwa kitu katika taifa hili la Kenya. Mheshimiwa Speaker, ni ruhusu pia niweze kumtambua Alfred Ogwenu ambaye aliakuwa ndioraisi wa kwanza wa vidjana pale Mombasa. Ambaye haji akuwa tena kituchochote lakini najua. Kupitia sheria hi ambayo na omba maseneta wenzango aweze kuyunga mkonu. Ataweza kutambulika kama kidjana shupazu. Kidjana Alfred Sigo kutoka kule changamwe. Kidjana wa kike baby manga maharufu kutoka likoni. Nandugu zangu wote ambao tumekua katika mapambano ya umageuze. Kwa sababu najua katika miaka yetu tutakayo ishi. Siyo sote tutaka upata fursa ya kuongoza jamii yetu lakini kupitia ukumi hu wa. Lakini kupitia ukumbi huu wa umarufu. Tutaweza kuwatambua na kuasherekeya katika dihudi ya bazo munazifanya. Katika yami yetu ya mombasa na Kenya zima kwa jungla. Mweshimiwa spika naomba nimuite Professor Kamal, Senator. Aweze kuja kunuyunga mkono katika hodya yangu hii. Asante sani.
Senator Professor Margaret Kamal. Ziduye ya kwaamba utatumia kiswaidi ndio tuu na mfururizo. Muema.
Ah, thank you. Mister Speaker, for the sake of the members who don't understand Israeli much. Let me talk in English. And help them out. Mister Speaker, I stand to second this motion. On the county. This bill on the county Hall of Fame. Senate Bill eighteen of twenty twenty-three. And I do it proudly because it is a bill whose time has come. It's a bill that should have been implemented by now. I want to thank. Ah, the Honorable Senator Miraj Abduraman. For moving a very progressive bill and inward looking bill. Mister Speaker, we almost lost our identity because of colonialism. We reach a point, Mister Speaker, when the history books of Kenya and those of us in our generation remember. That we knew the history of West Africa more than the history of Kenya. We knew the history of Europe more than the history of Kenya. Because nobody was writing the history of Kenya. And where it was written, sometimes it was distorted. This bill is trying to recover an image for us as a nation. And for that, I congratulate my sister, Senator Miraj. Because we must be identified by who we are. And for us to be identified by who we are, we must write our history ourselves and we must store that history. Heritage is a right to every community. But the way we lost, we must look for a way of recovering. And this bill is trying to do a lot of that. We must restore ourselves from the damage that was done by colonialism. Incidentally, um, I and Senator Mugatana sit in the Ben African Parliament. And this year is the year of reparations out because of colonialism. So this bill is coming at the very right time when we must look inward and appreciate ourselves. Because a lot of damage was done. In fact, in the last sitting, Mister Speaker, there was a question of how do we quantify the damage of colonialism? Now I'm seeing a new area of damage in this bill. The fact that we lost identity and we didn't write our history. Somebody must pay us for that. Because we had history, we had chiefs, we had kings in our own villages that were completely eroded. I'm happy again that we are doing it now because it's urgent. That generation of elders that we should be getting information from is actually diminishing. And I think the sooner we finish, and I want to ask my colleagues, that we can finish this and go to the third reading and dispense of. So that our governors can run around to look for information from the elders that are still existing. Because we have lost a lot of our history. Um, so we cannot afford to delay, uh, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker. The objective, this bill has wonderful aims. First, to recognize local heroes. There is no community that does not have its own, uh, heroes. But we now know them by name and we sometimes don't even know what they did. Because nobody documented them. And we need to document that. Recognition of local heroes is a very important thing for us. We were meant to believe that our heroes in the colonial times were actually fighters against modern life. And so we are pushed to believe that they are not there. We thank God for the massais who have resisted changing their clothes up to now. The masa, the Ma community. That they say their dressing will continue whether you are modernizing or not. And our brother was here in full regalia today. There are things that we have lost. A sense of recognition of these heroes is also very important. Because those who are not heroes. Our heroes may not have been heroes to the colonialists at the time. But we need to, we need to restore them and put them in the heroes, uh, list. Recognizing heroes also brings a sense of appreciation, which sometimes we don't have in our nation. Mister Speaker, I was in the East African Legislative Assembly. Two thousand and two, two thousand and six. And I attended independent celebrations of the three countries, Kenya, Uganda and Tanzania. We had a session just before the Tanzanian, uh, independence at that time. At that time, the president was, um. It was the third president, Aliya Sanmuni. But for one week, all the radios were singing independence songs. Praising their heroes. Yerere you would feel like he's alive because the whole town of Russia was covered with billboard. The size of the billboard our colleague has used to welcome us here. Billboards of their first president. Billboards of their first cabinet. Billboards of people who have done things. Billboards of the Sansibar leaders. And we asked ourselves as Kenyans. How come before independence, we don't even talk about the founders of this nation? We don't even recognize the founder president. In fact, even now as we are talking, sometimes we don't talk about the founder president and yet we know. He sacrificed a lot for this country. This is what this bill is trying to restore. To bring back recognition and to recognize people. If we don't learn to recognize people, even our own children will not recognize us. And, and this is very, very important. A sense of appreciation in recognition of people who have done something will run through the bloodstream. And will, and that recognition will go further. So I think it is very urgent and it is very important. I was very impressed to listen to the daughter of the soil, uh, Senator Muma. When she gave us a whole list of heroes of Busia. And I felt like even the kidney transplant doctor Awari, Nelson Awari. We only know the building Doctor Nelson Awari. I didn't know. I've, I've, I've been to that building, but I did not know who this Doctor Wilson Awari was. Except until now, when, um, the majority whip said that he taught him. And, and that he was, he did the first kidney transplant. We don't recognize our people and we need to really restore that kind of, um, of dignity to people. Whether they are alive or they are gone. Preservation of culture is something else that we have almost forgotten. And as I said, it is because we leaned so much on the culture of the colonizer. That we almost to consider our cultures to be, um, a taboo. Inspiration over future generations, providing local, uh, role models is another very important one. Let us not forget that youth, young people grow because of role models. So we cannot afford not to recognize, uh, those who were before us and those who are, who, who. Uh, made sacrifices before us. People that we can emulate, people who demonstrated heroism in various ways. This bill has talked of strengthening county identity. Our counties are different. The constitution recognizes that we are different and that our cultures must be recognized. But in what form we recognize them, this bill is going to bring that kind of restoration. Mister Speaker. Promoting education, as we said, now that we are going for C B C, practical education. We also need to start identifying things that, um, that define us as a nation and that define our country. So this bill is a very progressive bill and I want to persuade colleagues that we move very fast to implement it. And as I said, it is a very urgent bill. It must be done in our time and it must be done before we lose all the old heroes that are still with us. There, there is, uh, there are responsibilities that have been given to the county government in this bill. I really would like to support that it is good that the county government takes responsibility. When it comes to implementation of this framework. Basically because we have variation. This county, we have been told, has, uh, three different communities and they must be recognized in, in, um. As such within the county. But that reduces to looking at, um, cultures of three communities instead of looking at cultures of forty-seven or forty-six as we are. So it is very important that, uh, this is honed at the county level. And I, I, I saw the options that have, that the framework has given. That county may develop a new building or, or designate a building. I really want to encourage that, uh, we can clean that one up. That they must actually give us, um, new buildings and new areas so that we have our culture. What I see in this is something like bombers in every county. Where the cultural dancers also will be displayed for purposes of tourism. And that it will not be only an education center. It will not be a, a hall of heroes, uh, photos and whatever. But we will also have our cultural displays. This will bring quite a number of cultures. Mister Speaker, I once went to Holland. For an academic trip and they, 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 they took us to our, to what they call their tourist center. Of course, tourism in Kenya is big business. Then we went for tourism and we were dressed in the original Dutch clothes. And asked to carry. Six pounds of, of cheese for photo session. And I thought that was really something. But as we went and I invested program taken care of by our hosts. Interestingly, they were paying hundred dollars, which is about now the cost of, uh, it's about thirteen thousand chilings. Just to enter and take a photo and go. And, and these are areas that we need to diversify. In any case, our tourism has not been diversified the way it should. We could be having, we would be having more touristic products if we went for that. So it is good that we want to, that, that we do it at the county level. Mister Speaker, I really agree with the very statement that, um, Senator, Senator mentioned. That really this is not just legislation. It is about moral obligations for us. So as a senate, we need to move forward and make sure that we do this for the past, present and the future of this country. And for the future of the nations so that our children don't look like they came from nowhere. And because our culture is totally, um, distorted because of wherever colonialists that, those days. Um. Mister Speaker. As I wind up, I want to mention that, um. There are a number of aspects that have come there and there is one on costs. That sometimes we look at costs and we don't realize that. A small cost today can, can pay you more in the future. But I like the phrase that was used again for those who did not understand because it was in Israeli. She put it very clear. That sometimes the cost of implementing the bill is debated. But we must ask ourselves, what is the cost of forgetting our heroes? What is the cost of allowing our history and heritage to disappear? What is the cost of denying our young people local role models? The bill allows counties therefore to use existing facilities for the sake of reducing that cost. But the truth is that there is no cost. You cannot put a cost to this. You cannot put a cost to forgetting heroes. Those who are with us before, those who charted the way for this, for this nation. And those whom, whose heritage we need to preserve. Mister Speaker, may I wind up by saying, by asking my colleagues that, um. I want to repeat, this is not a bill that we would like to spend too my time on. This is a bill that you read and you want to implement. So that we recover what must be recovered. And document what must be documented. With those remarks, Mister Speaker, I second.
Senator Cherege, you cannot raise your hand even before we propose the question. Just be patient. Honorable senators, I propose. The question that the County Hall of Fame Bill Senate views number eighteen of twenty twenty-three be now read a second time. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I'm wondering if we have lost the traditions of this house. How can a Cherokee want to claim the floor while is the people inducted him and showed him points of orders how to do work in this house are still sitting? He should know, Mister Speaker, that, uh. When such opportunities appear, you wait patiently. So I expect that today, Senator Kisang, despite his relatively. Advanced age than Cherege, will wait also for Cherege to speak first. Uh, then the good man, uh, from Tots can speak later, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I rise to support this, uh. Very important, uh, motion.
I'm afraid whether the ten years in the, uh, in the National Assembly, Kisang's ten years are also recognized.
Mister Speaker, you know, he's trying to bribe you because he knows you are an interested party in that matter. But I know you are, you are a straightforward juricaker.
Yeah.
Who, who, who delivers justice without compromise for people like Senator Kisang?
Okay.
Uh, Mister Speaker, I rise to support this very important, uh, uh, bill before us. This is a very important bill, uh, Mister Speaker. That has seen its fair share of rounds in this house. Uh, that is a house of the senate. I think, uh, this is a third attempt that we are actually making. And, uh. Listening to Senator Mirage and, uh, our colleague, Senator Professor Kamal. Move this bill. It gives very cogent reasons why any reasonable legislator. Either in the National Assembly or in the senate should support this piece of legislation, Mister Speaker. But unfortunately, each time this bill gets to the counterpart house in the National Assembly. They shelved it for reasons beyond my understanding. I do hope that Senator Mirage has committed this bill to prayer, uh, before moving it. And all the people she has mentioned, uh, Mister, Mister Speaker. Though limited to Mombasa County majorly. Uh, but its effect will be on the whole country and the forty-seven counties, uh, Mister Speaker. Will actually have justified reason to support this very important piece of legislation. One of the things I admire about advanced societies is in how they preserve their traditions. How they preserve, uh, various symbolic places, uh, Mister Speaker. And men and women who make serious commitment. People have moved to, from even celebrating individuals to even celebrating work culture, Mister Speaker. If you go, and I have said this example many times previously. Uh, I can't remember the specific airport, but in one of the, uh, airports in the United States. I read a caption that really impressed me. The same way people queue on airports. They had put a caption and I had said farmers are the heroes of this state. If you are a farmer, you don't have to queue because you feed us. And then when we inquired further, they were told that is because it got to a time where very few people. Wanted actually to participate in farming activities, uh, Mister Speaker, because of its meager returns. So they encouraged this culture. So they encouraged this culture that those that actually engage in farming activities, uh, Mister Speaker, are the heroes of that local state. And they were being celebrated so as to encourage young people, even as they grow up, uh, Mister Speaker, they would know that they are doing a very sacred task for the people of that state, uh, Mister Speaker. And you'll find that actually you'd see occasionally one or two people, uh, would walk instead of taking the queue, they just pass by the machine. The only thing that troubled me in my Kenyan mind, Mister Speaker, is that if you attempt to do that at JKA, everybody, including those who farm Skumawiki in Guinea-Bhags on the balconies of Nairobi, they'll claim to be farmers, Mister Speaker. You know us with our culture. If, even in that country as well, uh, Mister Speaker of the United States, many times when you see military servicemen and women walk even into patrol station and convenience stores, many times people will greet them and say, thank you for your service. Because people appreciate what others do for a living. It is that culture of appreciating men and women that do great for others, Mister Speaker, that encourages even our young people to know that there is value, Mister Speaker, in serving your country, in doing the right thing for your community. That is exactly what this bill is attempting to do. Yet unfortunately, Mister Speaker, because of our lack of good practices of preserving our culture, our artifacts, our historical events, uh, Mister Speaker, people have long forgotten us. You just saw this this afternoon. In fact, when I saw what the exchange between Senator Kaluale, uh, my good friend and Senator Catherine Moma, I said perhaps they are setting a precursor for the County Hall of Fame Bill. If there was a County Hall of Fame here in Busia, there was no need for argument between who has done this contribution or the other. We'd have just brought out the roll call here and say now that you're in Busia County, these are the men and women whose lives have had great impact to the people of Busia County, Mister Speaker. But it is non-existent. That's why we have to rely on the cultural perspectives of Kaluale, uh, Mister Speaker, or the feminine antics of my colleague, Senator Muma, Mister Speaker, to celebrate them. She is correcting me that antics is not the right word, Mister Speaker. Okay, feminine sensitivities, Mister Speaker, if I may replace, uh, that particular one, uh, Mister Speaker. I don't struggle with English, Senator Muma. Therefore, I, 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 I know what you mean and I wanted to make sure that I speak right. And just for the record, uh, you were right actually. As a father of daughters, I appreciate that you celebrated the women that have made great contribution to Busia County, uh, better than the menfolk from this region attempted to do, uh, Mister Speaker. And I agree also with her position earlier, that a woman belongs actually to where she's born, she also belongs to where she's married. It is a gift that God gave to them. They are the only ones that can have two homes. That's why even culturally, Mister Speaker, you find that women are sometimes elected in their place of birth or even where they have been married to. And if you want to challenge that, Mister Speaker, you become a woman and do the things that they do, uh, Mister Speaker, and carry the burden that they carry. Therefore, you, you, you benefit from that. So therefore, Mister Speaker, it is my sincere hope that we shall conclude on this bill and send it to our colleagues in the National Assembly, who will have the place of grace to appreciate that this has nothing to do with senators, uh, Mister Speaker, but everything to do with society appreciating important historical happenings, either contribution by human beings, events of nature, Mister Speaker, sacred locations, things that have had great impact in society, Mister Speaker, that you will preserve it. I have said and I want to repeat for emphasis sake, Mister Speaker, that there is no society that is worth its place of pride that does not have a place for celebrating the men and women that make great contribution for the advancement of that society. That the only way we will actually be able to measure you as a society, how advanced you are, Mister Speaker, is when you begin to do things such as this so that you encourage others to know that there is value in doing right, there is value in service to community. In fact, I want to challenge governors, our colleagues who serve in the executive side of our county assemblies. You don't even have to wait for this bill. Many of these countries, by the way, you know, I don't know where we got this culture from, to imagine that to do the right thing, you need the law. In many of these countries that I'm citing, there is no law. For example, Mister Speaker, in the United States, that dictate that if you meet a serviceman or woman, you have to appreciate them and say thank you for your service to the country. But people just do it out of appreciation. Therefore, I want to challenge colleague governors and people that, uh, are listening to this broadcast, Mister Speaker, that there is nothing that stops our county governments from celebrating and setting up County Hall of Fames, uh, Mister Speaker, even without the passage of this legislation, Mister Speaker. So that you appreciate the people that have made significant contribution to your community, to your country. Even the president, Mister Speaker, must set up this thing at a national level so that we appreciate and set it to the level, uh, Mister Speaker, where the men and women that have made our country great, Mister Speaker, all have brought us moments of national pride, uh, Mister Speaker. For the moments she has given us over all those world championships and Olympics each time, when you stand beyond a TV, in front of a TV, from whichever part of the world that you're watching from and see her conquer the world, Mister Speaker. Money will never repay. That's why I was a little bit disturbed last week actually, Mister Speaker. I never got a chance to look at, uh, my colleagues. I think, I don't want to mention them, but they know themselves, who appear to be besmirching the Harambe stars players actually, who are just encouraged to invest in the affordable housing program. And they took issue with it and say, oh, why are they being rewarded? Number one, they were not being rewarded, they were just being encouraged to invest in it. I thought as legislators, Mister Speaker, we would say, if you recall the triumph and the journey of our young people that participated in the Chan Twenty Twenty Four that happened in Kenya, Uganda and Tanzania, Mister Speaker, is that they came at a time actually, Mister Speaker, boom and bloom in the country as a follow-up to the political activities of June and July. And they brought us very good reprieve as a country in a moment of national pride. That is not something that you can ever replicate, Mister Speaker. No amount of money will ever buy or bring a country together the way our sportsmen and women, just to use them as an example, Mister Speaker, do each time when they represent the country and do as proud, uh, Mister Speaker. That moment when you feel proud as a Kenyan, uh, Mister Speaker. That's what decent societies do. We don't need legislation such as this, Mister Speaker, to remind us. But because this is our culture and because we know how we behave, perhaps you need to put it and draft it into law, Mister Speaker, so that people begin to appreciate and know that the same way we insist that crime must be punished to deter those that are thinking of doing similar things, Mister Speaker. You know the way they read the convictions in court so as to prevent you and those with over similar behavior from ever thinking of doing this and that. I convict you for this and this. This is an attempt to do the same for those that have done great. So that when young people from a particular primary school in Busia here, Mister Speaker, visit the Busia County Hall of Fame, they will read about the Julia Ojumbo professor that Senator Catherine Muma was talking about, her biography, the things that he has done, where she went to school and her contribution and her relevance to the people of Busia. It inspires our young children. Otherwise, Mister Speaker, if we leave it as it is today, they will get inspiration from TikTok alone, Mister Speaker, and the people that are doing some funny things in there. Because there is no place that they can go and read about the history of their county, of their community, of their region, uh, Mister Speaker, and how the contributions of eminent sons and daughters of that region or place or country, Mister Speaker, has been captured and recorded. We will not be here for eternity. In another few decades, most, if not all of us in this house, Mister Speaker, will be part of the history books. How will people remember our contribution? If it did, we would have done something good for the country or for the county that we represent if we don't begin this kind of culture. Many times you walk even in European cities and you find very insignificant acts, Mister Speaker. I remember being in one of the capitals, I don't recall the specific place, but they just celebrated an individual, uh, Mister Speaker, whose contribution to that community was a fact that for the longest time, he ran a newspaper magazine store that the greater part of that county or municipality got their news from, for, I think for a couple of decades, Mister Speaker. And at the end of his life, the local municipal actually renamed that corner of the street in his honor, uh, Mister Speaker. Little, little contributions. It doesn't have to be the people that make great exceptional things that we think, oh, um, this person did something that was life-changing. It could be just somebody that did something as honorable as selling newspapers, informing people and their bread of life dutifully and diligently and did so for a record number of years to a point that people appreciated that there was a honest person who served this community. I believe there are many such people, Mister Speaker, who have done great things in our county. Not necessarily the things that we elites celebrate, but even in their ordinary life, just honest, decent life, Mister Speaker. Something that is so lacking in our society in present day, Mister Speaker, that to a point where people can begin to celebrate and say, there was a cobbler actually who kept his time. That unlike other cobblers who tell you that, uh, I was just waiting for the shoe to dry up before I knit it together and when you walk away, they put it away, Mister Speaker. That there was this gentleman who for the time that he served in this place, lived a decent and a honest life, Mister Speaker. I believe that that is a challenge to all of us that are in leadership and all of us as a society. Because part of the struggle that the Kenyan society continues to face up to this day, Mister Speaker, is a fact that we lack good examples for people to follow. Everybody is on and about and doing their own things. There are very few men and women to emulate anymore. I don't know, Mister Speaker, about you are concerned, for example, as a father. I say this because as a father, many times you engage your kids and are concerned about the people that they consider to be their heroes. Apart from you would think that the same way for you back in the day to be the professor by the corner in the village, you are particular individual who had a quote-unquote big job in Nairobi. For them, it's very interesting characters. And I want to encourage, uh, those of you that are young parents like Senator Kajuan, Senator Chalaghe and the rest, I think Senator Omogenwe can spare him this condition because at least to the best of my knowledge, his kids are all of adult age. Uh, but Senator Kajuan, Senator Chalaghe, this is a conversation that you may sometimes want to have with your young children, to ask them who their heroes and role models are. You'll be shocked that it is not necessarily the people that you yourself growing up used to think that I'd wish to be like so-and-so. So if we don't set up this culture, Mister Speaker, of celebrating the men and women that do exceptionally well in our society and finding a place to preserve their story and make sure that it is told in the right way, Mister Speaker, we are setting a very bad culture for our society. It is my hope, Mister Speaker, that in the formation of this, uh, Hall of Fame, uh, in our various counties, the designation of the place, because it is stated that there'll be a designated public building where this can be done. I have said and I want to repeat, Mister Speaker, that you don't have to wait for this bill as a county to do it. I'd encourage any forward-looking and any progressive governor, particularly those that are serving their second term, that actually begin this and that will be part of your contribution to your society in future. When people read about your history, it will be read that actually the culture of county X, Kericho County, Bungoma, Busia, I don't know, Vihiga, Mister Speaker, celebrating its men and women was begun by Governor So-and-so. And this building was dedicated for the future of this society. So that in a hundred years' time, people will come and read and know that there used to be a senator of theirs who used to do this or the other and is considered a local hero. It doesn't have to be even a politician. It could be a local priest, uh, Mister Speaker, whose contribution to making that society better make. Part of it also, Mister Speaker, the part that I appreciate about this is actually preservation of historical items and artifacts. There is a place, for example, in my county, uh, in Kericho, where when Queen Elizabeth visited, I don't know in which year, very, uh, in the early parts of the twentieth century, Mister Speaker, that she visited and laid flowers in appreciation of how beautiful and vast that land is. I believe you've been to Kericho and you appreciate how beautiful and expansive, uh, the land is. That place, if you go there today, you'll find cows, uh, just leaping and donkeys, uh, Mister Speaker. You hardly even can recognize it. In fact, how I even came to know about it as a senator is that there is an old lady who walked up to me sometimes in Nairobi at a shopping mall and told me, by the way, Senator, you guys have really let me down. There is this particular corner of the county that I want you to visit and check. And she gave me the history of how that place, uh, became a historical, historically relevant part of the county. And when I checked actually true to her, uh, telling of the story, Mister Speaker, it was completely neglected and run out, nobody even appreciated. I want to believe in more decent societies. A place that, a person of that world fame has visited and done something that is symbolic and significant would at least be preserved for high admirers or for future generations and people who want to know who is this particular person when they visit. There are many other things that can be said. There was a big contest back in the day, uh, Mister Speaker, about returning the head, for example, or the spear that was used by Quitallel and up somewhere from the British forces. And up to date, that is yet to be done. How will it be returned, Senator Chalaghe, you have not built the public building where to keep it? If it comes, where will you take it? Will it go to your home or the home of my friend, Governor Zag, uh, Mister Speaker? We must preserve and be ready to do this thing, what decent societies do, uh, Mister Speaker, so that you can preserve, uh, our culture and celebrate what needs to be done. I don't want to belabor the point, Mister Speaker, because I know this is a fairly straightforward matter. I want to agree, uh, Mister Speaker, that this is long overdue. My only plea is that when it gets to our colleagues, the counterparts in the National Assembly, they will do that which they are duty-bound to do to ensure that we give the country a good piece of law. I congratulate Senator Mirage, uh, on the, uh, choice of bill actually to move while we are here in Busia because it speaks to relevant issues that are related to people in our counties. I thank you for the chance, Mister Speaker.
Honorable senators, there is a lot of interest on this bill. I just advise us, of course you have your twenty minutes contributing, but I advise as your chair that you can spare your colleagues some time also to say I want. You don't need to use the twenty minutes. Senator Catherine Muma, for some reasons better known to me.
Uh, thank you, Honorable Speaker, and I will not be too long. Uh, Honorable Speaker, uh, first I wish to congratulate, uh, our colleague Senator Mirage on this bill. Uh, Senator Mirage, uh, has picked a topic, uh, Honorable Speaker, that is one of the neglected functions in this country. Honorable Speaker, when you look at the fourth schedule, the function of, uh, culture, cultural activities, libraries, museums is with the county governments. But when we do our office oversight, I tend to think that the senate has over-concentrated on departments that deal with other issues, the fancy one being the roads. But we have not, in the thirteen years of devolution, done a good job on assisting counties to implement the function on cultural activities. Senator Mirage, I want to congratulate you on behalf of the people of Kenya because this is another ball that we have dropped as a collective, both national government and county governments. Why do I say so? Honorable Speaker, we have history books that have misinformation about Africa, about this country. But who can correct? We have been ranting about it. My own daughters have asked, how could you people sit around and allow books to say so-and-so discovered, like Victoria so-and-so discovered this other bit? And you're doing nothing about it. We have history departments in our universities. And Honorable Speaker, we have never made a national policy to say, when do we begin to correct the history that has been written about our country? When do we sit down to document our cultural activities? But we treat this as issues that are footnotes. Honorable Speaker, I'm in the Education Committee and we will be reporting to you sometime that ECD is another thing that counties have taken as a footnote. You find that education budgets are going to functions of national government, but VTCs that should be lifting the bulk of the youngsters who drop out of universities are not well-funded. But even as we fund them, we are putting little in terms of nurturing our cultures, building the, the libraries we are talking about, encouraging, uh, our histories to be written. So I want to congratulate So I want to congratulate you, Senator Mirage, because you're bringing an issue that seems to be insignificant and yet it is extremely important. Honorable Speaker, why is this issue very important? We are moving to an age where artificial intelligence is currently taking over operations of our economies, operations even within the schools. And Honorable Speaker, artificial intelligence operates on the basis of data. That data is mined on the basis of what has been written. What data do we have about ourselves, about the peoples of Kenya? Where can I go to be able to learn about the peoples of Kenya? Honorable Speaker, we don't have that information. We only have snippets of little information about what has been selected by whoever is authoring a paper or a book at that at any one time. But we have rich histories as the over 53 communities in Kenya that we can actually write. And our system of devolution provides a good solution for us to have 47 or more simultaneous activities that will help us to document, to come up with the kind of data that will ensure the world will plan for Kenya on the basis of what is relevant for Kenya. We have not been doing this. Honorable Mirage, the only thing I might want to advise that you include in this bill, as I said earlier, again, the Senate dropped the ball on the issue of strengthening intergovernmental mechanisms. Honorable Speaker, this is one bill where we can have good conversation between national and county government because of the tourism that will be there, the trade issues and so on. It is also one of the good bills that would give us a good inter-county conversation around some of these things. For instance, Honorable Speaker, assuming we want to write about the cultural festivities among the Kalangin community. The Nandi people are not just in the Nandi County. The Kipsigis people are not just in Bomet. They are in Bomet, they are in Kericho, they are in Nandi. So if we had an inter-county conversation, we would be able to have a history that is written, accurate history that will tell us on why we have this community dispersed in the manner it is dispersed. Honorable Speaker, we have Luas in Migori, the Maragoli. We have Maragoli also in Vihiga. When looking at cultural issues of the Maragoli, I would expect that there would be inter-county conversation. So the history of the Maragolis would be reflected, both in Vihiga would also be reflected in Migori. So this is also an opportunity.
Senator Kadred Muma, do you want to be informed by the senator from Vihiga County?
Honorable Speaker, he's a Maragoli, so I will allow him to inform me.
Yes, Senator Osusi.
Mr Speaker, I just wanted to inform her that the community she is referring to, Maragoli, are not just in Migori or any other place. They are also a recognized tribe in Uganda, just next door, Mr Speaker.
Next time you see, I wanted to inform Senator Kadred Muma, not to inform her.
Thank you, Speaker.
Call the senator by the name, Senator Kadred.
And the points the senator makes is well-taken. And we have other communities, the Masai communities are in more than one country, the Luo are in more than one country. So coming together, we would actually bring a very rich product if the counties took this seriously. Honorable Speaker, I'm sure you've traveled maybe as a Catholic to go to Israel, to go to Rome. And when you go there, you give a lot of money basically to be told the history of Rome, the history of Christianity. There is also a history of Kenya. And what Honorable Mirage has done, members, I want us to take it seriously in order to be able to assist, not just to award the heroes and heroines within our communities, but to establish, one, to correct our history, two, to also establish an economy around our culture. But apart from that, for our very informed children, especially the Gen Zs, to be able to kind of redeem ourselves for having retained history that does not reflect the truth about Kenya, history that we can actually write well. And as I have said, it is one of the county functions not seriously taken. We need now, and the Committee on Labour, needs to start possibly report to, start reporting to Senate, how well counties are investing in this function, what they're investing in this function and how we are able to come together inter-governmentally, national and county governments, and also inter-county in order to make this law work. I want to urge our colleagues that this is a good law, a law required, a law required very urgently by this country because of where the future is going. Let us do our documentation so that we don't have biased interpretation of who we are when we move to the AI-driven economy. Thank you, Mr Speaker.
Mr Speaker, you need to protect me from Senator Ledama. Mr Speaker, Madam Speaker, let me begin just to make a few observations. One is that I want to commend Senator Mirage Abdellai. I think, Madam Speaker, one of the senators that as a party of United Democratic Alliance we are proud of is Senator Mirage. Because she has continued to distinguish herself in general rights, culture and many other aspects. And I'm impressed and surprised that within three years, she has done more than what other 10 years people who have been here have done. Senator Mirage, we wish you well and as a party, we are proud of you. We want also when this law is passed, when your governor Abdul Somat, although he's not doing very well, will have constructed County Hall of Fame, he will include you prominently in one of the Hall of Fame. Madam Speaker, I want to make a few things. When you look at the fourth schedule, number six, is it, I think, the fourth schedule, some of the functions that, one of the, out of 34 functions on the fourth schedule, Madam Speaker, that has been given, when you look at number four, Bachi and Edge, it says cultural activities, public entertainment and public amenities. So this is one of the core functions of the county government. So what we are doing, and I hope the National Assembly, as the majority leader said, will pass this law. Because Senator Mirage, you need to play hard through the speaker for this bill to be passed. Because this bill has taken circles to circles, Madam Speaker. So we hope with the reading of fourth schedule, rule number four, culture is properly domiciled in counties. So the passage of this bill is within the aspect and the ambit of the constitutional provisions of what we should do as protectors of devolution that we provide for in Article 96 of our role, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm aware that a number of our colleagues have been earmarked to be given national honors, including Senator Ledama Olekina and a number of colleagues that have been given national honors. But I'm sick, I hope this law, when it comes to pass, we should have a criteria. But I'm sick, I'm not saying my colleagues should not qualify. But I always suspect it's being politically correct, in my own opinion. That is, because, Madam Speaker, you was truly, I serve as the Chair of JAL. I was never given an award. Because then-then presidents, then-then president and powers be felt that I should not be awarded. I became the Vice Chair of County Public Accounts Committee, I was never awarded. So we need a law like this to give us the criteria. The national honor should not be dish out like sweets, like jugo karranga on the streets, Madam Speaker. It should be given, I remember the biggest scandal of Gideri man. The man just killed with a Gideri and he was given a CPS as state owner, HSC as state commendation. While yours truly has never been given and I've done a lot for this country, Mr Speaker. So next time I should vote while holding Gideri in my hand so that I can be awarded. So what I'm saying in short is that this law will provide a proper criteria on how heroes from the county and the national can be recognized. So that whether you are pro or against the system of the day, the fact that you have done in this country, Madam Speaker. You spoke today about Professor Julia Ojumbo and I'm honored, Madam Speaker, you are aware when you're having a breakfast and we say that no, you could see even my Chair of PAC was there. We greeted her with a lot of admiration and respect. And I wish Senator Chiruyat was there to greet her, but I know he's a busy man. He was coming from empowerment programs, he was just landing. So and we greeted, we greeted Professor Julia Ojumbo and you were amazed. This simple lady, this humble lady, this professor. You know, it's like when the children, when you remember, Madam Speaker, you are a Christian like me. When the Mary and the other lady went to the tomb where Jesus was buried. When the angel appeared, they went into a trance. That is what happened as to today when we met Professor Julia Ojumbo today. And we are proud of her, we are proud of Muhyar Wari, one of the Vice Presidents and a distinguished legislator. Although I'm informed he has a brother here just next door in Uganda. We are proud of sons and daughters, even Senator Okiah Okwiti Omutata. I don't know whether, yeah, Senator Okwiti Omutata has etched his name in the history of this country in civil rights and human rights in terms of litigation. I don't know about these other ambitions that he wants to be the sixth, but we are warning him that he should not be the sixth on Facebook, but he should go put the boots on the ground. And that is what we are just emphasizing, that we celebrate sons and daughters of this, on this.
Senator Cheraghe, do you want to be informed? Senator Cheraghe does not want to be informed, sorry. No, 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 he does not want to be informed, that's all right. Proceed.
Madam Speaker, so that is why I was talking about national honors. Because let us reward their good in leadership, science, culture, Madam Speaker, and many others in sports. Now like Faith Keep Ya Gone, we are proud of her, Madame Odira, a number of them, Wanuni, Madam Speaker. And you had that it is courtesy of Ugali that Wanuni won, but being told by Faith Keep Ya Gone, Madam Speaker. And now the kids that are provided by AK should also improve. And at this point, Madam Speaker, even in sports which we are proud of, athletics, people like Ezekiel Kemboy, people like Konselelas Kipruta, Madam Speaker, people like, there is a gentleman who just passed on. He was among the 1972 Olympics, the Mayñoro from Kisii, Makekatiwamensa, Koyitalle Arab Somway and many others, we should recognize. Even today, no one knows these Gen Zs. They don't know who Professor Julia Ojumbo is. They don't know. Madam Speaker, they don't need unless you Google. So how do you know that I'm driving my point home? So we need to build a museum where these histories get. I am impressed by colleagues who have traveled outside for benchmarking. But a number of them who have traveled, I don't know what is wrong with the mic today. Madam Speaker, there are many colleagues who have traveled. You go to Atlanta International Airport, is it called Pearson International Airport? They say something about that state. You go to many states, there is something unique about those states. We need to refocus, Madam Speaker. There is an issue, so that I just make two points and I allow my, I yield. Madam Speaker, it's on the issue of Koyitalle Somway, Koyitalle Somway. Koyitalle Somway, Madam Speaker, I want to thank His Excellency the President of the Republic of Kenya, Dr William Brut. As we talk today, Koyitalle Somway University is being constructed in Nandie Hills Town in honor and recognition of Koyitalle Somway. Koyitalle Somway, Madam Speaker, who led the Nandi resistance that we refused the railway to pass until it passes near your home, Madam Speaker, because I have been told you have two homes. You have where you were born and where you are married. So it is us until that railway was divested, it's because of Nandi resistance led by Koyitalle Somway Arab, Koyitalle Somway. And in honor, Madam Speaker, the government is constructing one of the biggest universities, Koyitalle. Just like Detan Kimani University, Madam Speaker, Detan Kimani University. We have also an hospital, GM Karaoke Hospital, also in Rift Valley, in Laikipia, Olkalau, Madam Speaker. So this is it, and I want to thank the Senator of Kericho. Madam Speaker, we have not received the ad that was taken by the whites in 1950s, the skull of Koyitalle Somway University, Koyitalle Somway, Madam Speaker. In fact, that I have tracked, that skull, Madam Speaker, is in Pitts Rivers Museum, London. I want to challenge Chair Labor to track this skull. I know where it is. It is in Pitts Rivers Museum somewhere in London. I know Commissioner Kingwa has traveled extensively and he might be aware of this museum. Some of us rarely travel, Madam Speaker. Maybe we are not, we don't look nice to travel. So Madam Speaker, that is, this is where the skull, the skull, the skull of Koyitalle Somway is in Pitts Rivers Museum. And I want to call upon, let us bring the skull, we brought the artifacts and I want to inform the House. In Koyitalle, we have established courtesy of President Quebec and I want to thank President Quebec. He was never tribal, he never preached about tribalism. He gave us money to construct Koyitalle Somway Moselium in Nandie Hills Town. That is where the skull of Koyitalle Somway will be brought. Remember, people like Bishop Mugue, over Sika he fought for justice. He died while living this county of Busia because he was not politically correct. I am time to thank the Anglican Church of Kenya, they have recognized him, they have buried him in Sika Saint Matthews in Eldorado. He fought, he died on his way back after coming to Busia, your county, when he had joined other Kenyans for civil rights and human rights. Madam Speaker, Father Alois Chiruyat Bet, who was just killed by us as sins for trying to bring peace in Kirivale. These are later-day heroes that we must recognize, that we must recognize, Madam Speaker. The other day we were doing for the race of to construct a church in this one. I want to thank the Catholic Church and the Kenya Catholic Bishops Conference that we will remember him. These are heroes that they have something that they did for this country. Not people who vote with Gideri on the line and they were given Edos. And I hope in honor of Father Alois Chiruyat Bet, Madam Speaker, he should be awarded posthumously. I would have expected in these national honors for people like Father Alois Chiruyat Bet to be recognized, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the issue of customary law, we must recognize. I would have expected Senator Mirage to say something about Makekatiwamensa, people like Sharif Nazir, people who did something for this country, Madam Speaker. Luanda Magere, these are people we should, so that our general and general can know who they are. In fact, in this proposal, Madam Speaker, we should have at least a museum be constructed. Madam Speaker, you have traveled extensively. You go to every state, they have a unique place where they try to preserve their country. What is wrong with us Africans? Why do we run away? I want to separate the Ma community. Why do we learn, why run away, I want to separate the Ma community? Because they have really tried, despite the modernisation, to maintain their culture, their identity, Madame Speaker. Madame Sika, on the aspect of optics, I agree. The issue of posterity of information, we have conversed that, Madame Speaker. On the conflict of interests, we have said that, Madame Speaker. On the issue of a selection committee, I want to agree that we need a proper selection committee to know who should qualify for not have people like Gideri man being awarded commendation, state honours or county honours, Madame Speaker. I would have wished Senator Mirage to get aspect of county honours. Because we now have national honours, so I don't know how the selection committee will phrase, Madame Speaker. On the procedure and petition, I'm happy this has been, I'm just running through, Madame Speaker, in the interest of time. Is the petition, you can petition, and I'm happy, Madame Speaker, you didn't mention something about the sons and daughters of this, but in my culture, Madame Speaker, where I come from, I tend to agree with Senator Kalwale, that when you are born and dowry is paid, you you belong to Mze, where you are, you you are married. But I know that.
Oh, the Senator Kalwale, Senator Chirargue, can you focus on the bill?
Madame Speaker, Senator Kalwale might have disturbed you, until you are referring me to Senator Kalwale. Madame Speaker, I'm just saying my college in Kancha, and elders are watching me, and I just to talk to the number of them. When you marry, you get your wife and you pay dowry, and I know my elder Senator Kisan is smiling in confirmation, because it's like that, Madame Speaker, in conclusion, I remain focused.
Senator Chirargue, I'll take opportunity since you're wearing off to inform you that the first woman governor in Rift Valley is married, was married in Luonyanza.
Speaker, you know, culture and voting are two different things. So on that one, I agree because they are totally different things. But I'm speaker in conclusion, because I've seen my, but I'm speaker finally, something about revisionism of history. But I'm speaker, I've seen some people saying, you know, it's only Maumau who fought for freedom of this country. It is not true. These people have written the history for their convenience. We have people from where Senator Danson Mungatana came from. Even in Okampani, we should stop this revisionism of history. Even here in Busia, there are many freedom fighters. But some people somewhere have decided that Maumau only fought for freedom and they come from Mount Kenya. Even in Mandera, even I used to have Tipkwan, the 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 father to Raila Amolodinda. Mze, the the grandfather. The, the. Madame Speaker, what is the name of the the father to Raila, my chair? Oginga? Odinga?
The father to Odinga is Jaramogi Oginga Odinga.
Are the freedom fighters, my my grandfather, Jean Maria Seroné. Why is it that when they write history, they want only to recognise people from Mount Kenya? And that is why you see one of the politicians always shouting on top of there.
What's your point of order, Senator, Senator, Senator Mayna has a point of order.
Honorable Speaker, I raise on a point of order, understanding order 98 and 101 on the accuracy of the contents of the speech being given by the Honourable Senator from Nandi, Senator Chiradige. Is the Senator in order to raise about objections about Maumau having fought for the freedom of this nation? While in actual fact, the purpose of this bill is to honour individuals who have played a critical role in the development of this nation, who have fought battles and conquered in various respects, and who, the Honourable Speaker, if he had an issue about who fought for the freedom of this nation, and he believes there are some who fought from coast region, from western region, from Nyanza region, what he needs to do is to offer that evidence, but not challenge, Honourable Speaker, the role that was played by Maumau in fighting for the freedom of this nation. Is he in order to juxtapose it so that to bring down the role that was played by Maumau, Honourable Speaker? He's out of order, he needs to be called back to order, and he should offer.
Senator Mayna, my understanding was he did not denigrate what Maumau did. What he says, there are others beyond Maumau.
He can bring in the evidence without showing as though he's, you know, he's comparing the two, juxtaposing the two, and bringing one, and this is not the purpose of this bill. The purpose of this bill, Honourable Speaker, is to ensure you celebrate the Maumau for what they did, and celebrate.
Senator.
Let me finish, Honourable Speaker.
You know what a point of order should be.
You celebrate the Maumau, and you celebrate whoever else fought for freedom from their honour.
Senator Mayna, you know what a point of order, how a point of order should be. Senator Chirargue, I will direct that you you be sensitive not to denigrate any hero from this country.
Madame Speaker, I I I thank you, Madame Speaker. I'm 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 surprised because Senator Ferunika is a member of Speaker's panel. I thought she knows the difference.
Senator Chirargue, Senator Chirargue. Out of order, I can again. Focus on your presentation.
Madame Speaker, can I conclude?
Senator Chirargue, do you want to be informed by Senator Kenya?
Madam, madam, madam Speaker, I just wanted to inform Senator Chirargue, if he bothered to read his history, it is not only Maumau who fought for independence, there is Koyitali Larame who resisted. There is Mekatile Wamenza. It's just that he doesn't know, he is reading his history selectively. It is in public knowledge, everybody knows. That's why we are looking for the skull of Koyitali Larame. Why would he be looking for his skull? Because he resisted. Thank you, Madame Chair.
Senator Chirargue, rest ipselokita. Please proceed to finish.
Thank you, Mr Speaker. I think that was a lot of disinformation, Madame Speaker, colleagues.
Senator Chirargue, please just focus.
Information or deny? I deny that information. Madame Speaker, with those many remarks, so that my colleagues can contribute, we should stop revising history in this country. I support the bill.
Yes.
Senator Osotie.
Thank you, Madame Speaker, for this opportunity. Let me start by congratulating the honour of this bill, Senator Mirage Abdullai, for this very, very good bill. Honourable Mirage, you have demonstrated that nominated members.
Senator Osotie, allow me to interrupt a little. For the senators who have not spoken, colleagues have requested if you could take a little less time. We know you have all your time by right, but if you could take a little less so that they can all speak.
Yes, I was saying, I think as a nominated senator, I think it's important to appreciate that this is a huge contribution to to this senate coming up with this very, very necessary and important bill. So I want to congratulate Senator Mirage, who was my member in the CPIC committee. Very committed member, always appearing during the meetings and contributing. I really miss you when you left. Madame Speaker, allow me to quickly make a few comments. This bill is a good bill and is long overdue. But I have a few observations that I wanted to make. Madame Speaker, now that we are in Busia County, everything we are speaking here, we are debating, we must always make reference to Busia County, so that we look like we are indeed, we are Senate machinani. I want to say that there are many heroes in this county, Busia County, who have been forgotten. And not just in academic, as someone put it earlier today. We have heroes in this county, like JJ Masiga. Those who remember those golden days of FC Leopards and Gormaya. You remember JJ Masiga could score a goal against Gormaya when it mattered most. I remember East African Challenge Cup in Uganda, where Gormaya and FC met in the final, and they were leading by two goals against FC Leopards. And JJ Masiga, in the dying minutes of the game, helped to score three goals against Gormaya. And this gentleman was not just a footballer, but he is a great doctor in this count, in this country, Madame Speaker. But JJ Masiga has not received any honour from this government, nothing at all. But the people who have done very little are getting honours, Madame Speaker. Even the Gideri man got a honour from President Uru for just displaying gideri in a paper bag. And serious people like Masiga have nothing to show off. We have another important spokesman in this county called Wilbur Bosmulamba, who was also a great footballer, great footballer over times. No one is talking about him today, Madame Speaker. And then latterly, Madame Speaker, Noah Wanyama, who happens to be the father of Mariga and Victor Mugabe, hails from this county. And then you come now to Mariga and his brother Victor, the most decorated professional footballers. The two are from this county, but there are no honours to them. So even as we discuss about this, we also need to question the process of giving these national awards to our people, and starting with the Busia County. And I hope, yes, tomorrow when we are debating that motion of recognising the great sons and daughters of this county, we need to come up with a resolution that they should be remembered, whether alive or dead. And not forgetting the late Obel, who will be buried very soon, also held from this. This is a man who made an attempt to discover the AIDS drug and was never given a chance. This is a man who promoted African medicine, which has now become a global issue in some countries. So I think we need to really push for recognition of these sons and daughters of this county. Mr Speaker, when we talk about preservation of history, culture and heritage, I think this is where Kenya has failed, because we don't preserve our history. And that is why we are not promoting patriotism among our youth. Because they don't understand our struggles, because they don't understand our history. Madame Speaker, if you go to some countries, you are amazed with the level of protection of their history, preservation of their culture and heritage. I recently had an opportunity to visit Kremlin. Kremlin is a power centre of the Russia Federation. And Madame Speaker, here in Kenya, we struggle to go to State House. When someone goes to State House, it's a big thing, and it is a show of power. But in Kremlin, where the President of Russia sits, it is also a museum. They have preserved their artefacts for centuries. Centuries, you go there and you find military equipment that were used in many wars in the past are kept there. You go there and find even important heritage, even gold that was was recovered in the war, is stored there. And that is important because it teaches the youth to be very patriotic to their country. And you go there, you see all that, and you pay something for that. Space technology, advancement in space technology, you go there and pay. So you go to Kremlin very easily, by just paying, and going to see those things, and you learn a lot. Unlike here in Kenya, where going to State House is political and a show of power. In those other countries, it's about culture, it's about heritage, it's about history, which promotes patriotism. Madame Speaker, I was looking at the bill in totality, and I was wondering, this selection committee that is proposed by Senator Mirage, I think it needs to be improved, because we have to have public involvement. Not just in public participation, but the inclusion in the select committee. It should not be a county government affair only, where we have the clerk of the county assembly, we have the CEC member in charge of culture and heritage, and the Chairperson of the County Public Service Board, and two public officers nominated by the County Public Service Board. Where is the public involved? I think you need to consider there, so that we have representation from stakeholders, from public. Otherwise, this committee is going to be controlled by governors. And they will bring people who are not worthy to be given recognition in terms of Hall of Fame. So I think that aspect has to be looked at. And again, we need clarity on who appoints the select committee. I know you will say appointment is by dint of the law, but I think clarity needs to to be there, especially for these two public officers who appoints them. Madame Speaker, let me also talk about the criteria of those who qualify for House of Fame. I think there are many areas you can look at, many areas. When people are looking for this criteria, they probably look at those who have contributed a lot in in politics, those who have contributed a lot in sports. But also we need to encourage investors in our counties. Madame Speaker, Madame Speaker, like this place where we are, Busia, there is a young investor in this town called Itoya, who is my friend. He has a big hotel here, he's doing so well in matters of event management. All the big tents that you see around, even in Nairobi, this guy is the one who does. This is one person who.
Oh, the Senator Marion, walk here like it's your house. Please go back and bow.
Madame Speaker, you know, members are not used to this chamber. So we need people like those to be recognised by their respective counties. Like in Viga, we have someone called Ibrahama Mbure, who is probably the richest businessman in this region. He no one recognises him. So I think the criteria of recognition must be very specific. Madame Speaker, talking about counties, you know our role is Article 96 of the Constitution. Any law we make.
No, no, Senator Osotie, can we have Senator Tobiko now?
Thank you, Madame Speaker. Madame Speaker, let me begin by congratulating Senator Mirage for this very good bill, Madame Speaker. Madame Speaker, our sister has done us proud. Madame Speaker, you know, for a long time, the nominated members have always been taken to, you know, look like some flower girls who came here with no brains and no value and no contributions. So my sister, you have done us very proud, this is a very good bill. Madame Speaker, no, I'm particularly happy with this bill, because. because um, as many members have said, it will correct, it will rewrite what needs to be rewritten, what needs to be corrected, what needs to be affirmed about our history, madam speaker. And eh, madam speaker, recognize very important people in the history of our republic, madam speaker, in the history of our communities, madam speaker, because it's very important that we don't lose, eh, madam speaker, people who have made exceptional contributions in our societies, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, eh, um, this eh, Hall of Fame, madam speaker, the nominees must be eh, able to demonstrate exceptional contributions, madam speaker, measurable achievements of whatever in, in various fields. I have heard eh, Senator Osotse talking about even those who have done well um, eh, in, in business, madam speaker. But I thought there should be a rider eh, on the issue of business, madam speaker, because this country has been dev- bedeviled by eh, corruption, so that we do not reward and recognize people whose eh, businesses, we, we may not understand the sources, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, if we were to reward eh, business people, then the country, the public must understand the sources of their, of their businesses. You know, madam speaker, so that we don't reward people who have ripped off the public of, of, of very needed eh, resources that would have otherwise gone to development, madam speaker. But madam speaker, I was saying, it is very important that eh, these nominees demonstrate eh, um, eh, exceptional contribution, madam speaker. Eh, and the eligibility should be a distinguished record, madam speaker, of eh, competitive achievement, madam speaker, at the highest levels. No, madam speaker, um, eh, you know, I might just become one of the beneficiaries of this, madam speaker, because in my community, madam speaker, I have, I'm, I'm known to have broken eh, glass ceilings, madam speaker. You know, no, I'm not campaigning, I'm stating a fact, I'm stating a fact. It is a fact that in my community, I am the first woman ever to be elected, not, not, not in the seat that has eh, been preserved for women, but for the ones that is believed are the preserve of men. You know, I, I might be injuring egos here of the Senator of Lake Pia and others, but it is a fact, madam speaker. And eh, eh, not, not for one term. I did it again, just to confirm that yes, the people have agreed that a woman, madam speaker, is as good a leader as the men, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, eh, the, this should go through rigorous processes and I do agree with eh, eh, previous speakers, madam speaker, that it should not be left to the county officials only. It should have public participation, so that the public can this eh, can decide and can confirm who really deserves to be put in that kind of record of the Hall of Fame, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, the voting process, even at the national level, so that we don't have again a situation that has been mentioned several here of the Gideiri man, so that we have people who eh, that are recognized nationally and that all Kenyans accept that this person has contributed in very special ways eh, eh, in their various fields, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, it is also good for communities to be able to, 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 to recognize and to reward, you know, their people, um, the people's, members of the, of their societies who have contributed to those communities. Madam Speaker, in the Masai community, for a long time, the history that has been written about our people is that we were collaborators, you know, of, 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 of the colonialists, but it's not true. We have Masais who fought along eh, side by side with the Maumau people, Mr. Speaker, madam speaker, and it is known and they can be recorded, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, we have eh, people of distinguished contributions in that society. Madam Speaker, we have people like um, eh, you know, the Honorable, the late Honorable Timama, who has continuously fought for the rights of that community, for their, for their land rights, and it may need to be recognized, madam speaker. He fought to the last minute, madam speaker, of his life. So madam speaker, it is important that we have these contributions. Madam Speaker, if I speak about um, eh, you know, women who in this country who have contributed, grace of God, Julia Ojiambo, Jane Kiano, very many, eh, Senator Beth, Beth eh, she was Beth who? Beth Mugo. Madam, madam speaker, women who have stood for the rights of women in this country to the level that we have read today, we, today we are in this house, standing on the shoulders of very great women. Madam Speaker, women like Charity Ngulu. I know women held eh, Charity Ngulu held the hands of very many women to be able to make it in their communities, madam speaker, to make it to Parliament. I know how many women who owe their, their achievements to those women, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, um, let me say eh, about Julia Ojiambo, because I have a special um, eh, you know, gratitude towards Julia Ojiambo. For me to get into politics, madam speaker, because the big parties will not recognize a woman from, you know, eh, my community, because they thought women will never make it. Julia Ojiambo accepted me in her political party, which was called LPK. That is where I began my politics. That is how LPK formed eh, the eh, coalition with eh, Honorable Kalonzo Musioka to form ODM Kenya. And that is how I find myself today in this house, madam speaker. And so, madam speaker, the contributions of those women have results that are live today in this country. Madam Speaker, let me just say, this is really a bill that, that eh, the time has come and we should pass it as soon as yesterday, madam speaker. Madam Speaker, but let me just underline that a rigorous process needs to be taken, so that um, you know, we are rewarding really people of achievement, eh, madam speaker. People eh, people eh, you know, people and fields eh, of township that have tangible milestones, madam speaker, in all fields. The academia, the business eh, area, um, you know, leadership in politics and in many other areas, madam speaker, because leadership is not only in politics. Even in the social arena, madam speaker, there are people who have exemplary contributions, madam speaker, who need to be recognized. So madam speaker, I really do support, so that I can give time to my colleagues. Thank you, madam speaker.
Senator Omthata.
Eh, madam speaker, thank you for the opportunity to contribute this important bill. I find it quite important that we should have a way of recognizing those who make outstanding contributions to, to society. Only, my only concern is that we need to introduce something in the bill, eh, Senator Mirage, to address the funding of this kind of enterprise. It can end up being a white elephant if we don't secure its funding. Maybe say that by two percent or zero point zero two percent of the budget of the county government should go toward this kind of, this enterprise. And because, madam speaker, I'm the host, I'll not speak for long, there are many people who would like to speak. I just take the opportunity to invite eh, all of you here and welcome you to Busia. Enjoy your time and eh, feel free and feel at home. Thank you very much, madam speaker.
Senator Beth Sienggo. Senator Beth, are you ready?
Yes, I am now. Thank you, madam speaker. Let me start by congratulating my colleague Senator Mirage. Eh, this bill is very, very important. Madam Speaker, I would say that it is only Kenya that do not value their history as in to preserve it and make sure that eh, even young generations will know of people who contributed so much in this country. Madam Speaker, when we travel, for those of us who have the privilege to travel, we see statues, writings in other countries, people talking of their important people and figures who did a lot of contribution to their country. And in Kenya, we only talk of them and we forget and even our history isn't distorted. We don't get a true representation of what happened. And that's why Senator Peris Tombiko talked of Masai stamped as collaborators, yet they were also fighters and eh, they fought and contributed to independence. Madam Speaker, I would say that eh, this Hall of Fame in the counties is very important, because people from every county has done a lot for this nation, madam speaker. Looking at the region like Lower Eastern, I would say they are also very important people who have contributed to this, to the history and to this nation in special ways. When we look at eh, what a man called Muniaw Kisoi did to hoist the flag at Mount Kenya, a place which is very cold, there were no means of getting to Mount Kenya, to the peak, and he moved and went and hosted the flag of Kenya on Mount Kenya. Muniaw Kisoi must be recognized and it is very important that contribution of such figures is put into history. Madam Speaker, we also know of a man from Ki- from Kitiwe County called Chief Kivoy, who led the traders from Europe to go for long distance trade and they were walking all the way from the border of Tana River, going to the coast on food. There were no vehicles, there were no flights, but he walked. They walked and led teams to go and do better trade. Madam Speaker, those are contributions of Kamba people. We look at people like Sioke Mau, a woman that makes every Kamba to be called Sioke Mau, a great prophetess, who did and saw even the coming of the colonialists, even the coming of the railway line, construction of railway line. And people were traveling from Nandi, from Lake Pia to go and consult Sioke Mau to be told what is, what the future holds. Madam Speaker, a great prophetess. Madam Speaker, I want to add my voice to what the Senator of Nandi said.
Order Senators on my right, please eh, listen in silence.
Fighting for the freedom of this nation, the fighters did not come from one region. All Kenyans from all corners contributed. When you look at Paul Gay, who was even in prison with eh, with eh, Jomo Kenyatta, and we know of this, madam speaker. We cannot talk of Maumau to be the only people who fought for the freedom of this nation, but across the country, Paul Gay Akamba, Jomo Kenyatta from Mount Kenya, Koytale from Riftifali-
Senator Beth, nobody has said Maumau was the only one. So make you, make the point about-
I'm saying, I'm talking of inclusivity, madam speaker, thank you. I'm talking of inclusivity-
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Honorable Speaker.
Honorable Senator Veronica, I think I have dealt with the issue.
Yes, there is another point of order. But why are you contemplating, madam speaker?
Madam Speaker, I don't know why specific people getting agitated when-
Okay, Senator Mayna, what is your point of order?
Eh, honorable Speaker, my point of order-
Under which for, point of order? Senator Beth, I am the one on the chair.
Understanding order one oh five, the accuracy of the speech and the mode in which it is put. Honorable Speaker, is this honorable senator in order to once again denigrate Maumau, juxtapose and compare as opposed to her just giving her contribution-
She has not done what you're saying she's done. If you're raising a point of order-
Honorable Speaker, if you listen to what she said, let me quote what she said. She said, she said, it is not only Maumau. Honorable Speaker, the phrasing of those words is actually denigrating.
Senator Mayna, I am ruling that the, I have ruled the words are not denigrating. Eh, I have ruled, I have ruled eh, Senator eh, eh, Sienggo. I have requested that because of the sensitive manner in which this issue is, Senator, are you on the chair or I'm on the chair? Yes, you are, I, I can actually hear what you're saying, so please sit down. I'm actually ruling this. So I rule your assertion eh, not to be accurate. Eh, Senator Kenya, you have- Senator Kenya, that's a point of information, of important information, not order, a point of information. Senator Kenya, can you finish that point of information? Just wanted to guide you, it is a point of information, not order. Senator- Senator eh, Kenya has actually eh, eh, explained what Maumau means. And from what he's saying, Maumau is not restricted to people from Mount Kenya. So what is your point of information, Senator Kadjuang?
Sorry, madam speaker, I wanted to inform Senator Sienggo and the entire house that Kenyans of all shades, tribe and color fought for the independence of this country. In eh, Karachiwoño, there's a gentleman called Adala Utuko. Adala Utuko was a founder of the Kenya Taxpayers Organization that resisted British attempts to impose poll tax in certain parts of the country. He, he, he was killed, Adala Utuko's body has never been-
Sen- Senator Kadjuang, I didn't want you to eh, contribute on this eh, honorable sen- That's fine.
I'm sorry, it's called Ogijio Teco, I'm very sorry for mixing up the names. Ogijio Teco's remains have never been found, he was killed by the imperialists. So this thing of trying to own, to tribalize or re-
Sen- Senator, Senator, Senator eh, eh, Senator Kadjuang, I would want to actually lay this debate around Maumau to rest. One, eh, nobody has said on the floor of this house that only Maumau fought. So I want that debate to, to actually cease. Eh, and secondly, secondly, Senator Kenya has actually given some, Senator Kadjuang, please, Senator Kenya has given important information on what Maumau means. It does not mean Mount Kenya. So Senator Beth, you will contribute-
Thank you, Chair.
Senator Beth, you'll contribute without suggesting that Maumau is for one tribe. Senator Veronica, please, honor-
Chair, I did not indicate in any slightest, slightest way that Maumau belongs to Mount Kenya. I only said that when we talk of Maumau fighters, it should be inclusive.
I only said that when we talk of Maumau fighters, it should be inclusive.
Senator Beth Siengo, listen to me.
Even the late Honorable Phoebe Asio.
Senator Beth Siengo, if you will remember, the definition of Maumau as said is not one region. So proceed without making that.
Chair, that is his interpretation. We know other means. Anyway, Madam Chair, I wanted to say that even during the Strango, Honorable late Phoebe Asio fled a group of women to visit the Kapenguria Seven and they also contributed. And Phoebe Asio comes from Nyanza. Madam Speaker, I wanted to say Kitili Mwendoa from Kiti was the first chief justice from that region and he contributed so much. And that was followed closely by Honorable Nyva Mwendoa, who was the first female minister from the region of Kiti. Madam Speaker, allow me to say Charity Ngulu. As Senator Peris Tombiko indicated, that was the presidential candidate when even men could not dare oppose the late President Moi. Madam Speaker, I want to say His Excellency Alonso Musioka was also a vice president from the region of Kiti. So we have very senior figures from our region and they have contributed, Madam Chair, to the development of this nation and to the history of this nation. With the Hall of Fame, Madam Speaker.
Honorable Senators, it is now 6:30. Time to adjourn the House. There being...
Honorable Senator Beth, you have eight more minutes when this debate resumes. So the House will resume tomorrow, Wednesday 8th October 2025 at 2:30, at 9:30 AM. At 9:30...